Yes, we're open, but that's...
Potentially the public had a chance.
Yeah, alright. So, let's open the meeting up once again with public comment. Jessica, you know my normal requests.
Yes, so if anybody has public comments, you can raise your hand now. We just have Sawyer and Josh on the call. We have to put those first agenda items.
Okay, as long as we take comments and things that aren't on the agenda, but...
Yeah.
I'll say otherwise.
Do you want to go public comments?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I made it onto the agenda or not. I left a message a while back.
Are you Mr. Roddy?
I am.
Oh, you did get...did you not get my message back?
I did not.
Okay, I did call you back today.
Either way, I figured I'd stop in anyway. So, I...
Yeah, so...
Was there anything that you...
Right, so my response, it's a Chapter 61A request, so my response to that is that I need to send it out to our legal counsel before we can put it on the agenda.
Okay.
So, I did get your certified mail today.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure you had it.
Yep, yep. So, I faxed it over to him. So, once we hear back from him, he will be on the next agenda. I just go to the next agenda on November 2nd, so I'll be in touch with you over email when I get more details, okay?
Okay, great.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Do you mind if I just explain to these guys?
Go ahead.
Okay, so basically, we're selling our house. We had a 42-acre parcel that was in Chapter 61, Forest Management. We're selling our house with two acres. That will no longer qualify for Chapter 61 anyway. There's a little tiny sliver, about 2,000 square feet, attached to the house that has to be taken out of Chapter 61 for the sale. So, the assessors is all set with it, the DCR is all set with it. I just need all the other boards to stay there. There's no...you guys aren't going to try to do first written refusal. It's a landlocked little sliver of 2,000 square feet. So, I'm just going through the process for that. So, if you see it, that's what it is.
Alright, we'll get to that hopefully November 2nd.
Alright, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
You too.
I'll put it on the record, he's not a direct neighbor, but he's just two houses over, so he could be considered a neighbor. If it comes to me having to vote, I just wanted to put it out there, and maybe I should or shouldn't, but I wanted to put it out.
We're not going to buy the land and sell it to you, so it's...
No, and I didn't mean it that way. It's just more of a...kind of like sometimes, just because the word fire department's there, you're like, "I won't comment even though it shouldn't matter."
It doesn't, but yeah, I just...I don't need to. Special town meeting discussion with moderator Joshua Smith.
Okay, Joshua.
Joshua, you're going to get opened up in a second. Can you need any more volume up there?
My volume's all the way up. Joshua, if you mind speaking up a little bit, it's kind of hard for the board to hear you.
You hear that?
Thank you. Is that better?
Sure.
Okay, so, special town meeting. We talked about this briefly, maybe two meetings ago? Oh, okay, Matt's a little... And we talked about like a late November, early December meeting time, but we haven't...the town hasn't set the tax rate yet, so we have to do that before December 1st. So, I was talking, I've talked with Joshua, I've talked with Ellen, and we think that November 17th, which is Tuesday, might be an appropriate date if we can...but obviously, we want to have that discussion here first. We need to talk about venue, which I hope Joshua will elaborate on where he would like to see this being held, especially now that it's starting to get a little bit colder, and also about what's going to be on the special town meeting warrant. So, do you guys have any questions about the date or any concerns?
I don't know if we're going to be ready for that time in November. The main target for me was, well, I guess we'd have to. We'd have to...we're trying to get it before the tax rate's set, so that if we have shortfalls in the revenues that we can...yeah, I was going to say that too.
I think the hallway is...
Yeah, there's a lot of noise coming in from them and...
Sorry to interrupt.
Nope, nope, I was thinking the same thing. I didn't want to interrupt her when she was saying, but that's...there you go. The concerns of our revenues are short when we get into November to the second quarter collections, that we might want to access some of those funds before they get trapped when our tax rate's set. So, we do need to have the meeting before the tax rate is set.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm trying to hold out as long as we can and get the input from the tax collector, how the revenues are doing. So, that's...I don't know if November...
An email update today about that from Eileen, right? Regarding setting the tax rate with the hope to do it by November, maybe mid-December? Is that what she was talking about?
I don't recall seeing that message. I saw a different email from Eileen today that I was seeing that one.
Email on September, news relative to the LA 3 sales, LA 5 interim.
Oh, yep.
But was also checking to see if I could get an estimated timeframe where different departments have to finish filling in their info.
Yep.
Tax rate recap mid-November to ensure that the tax rate's a little later than the first week of December.
Right, okay, yes, I did see that email.
So, it sounds like her timeline is, assuming that works the way it is, so that we can have tax bills out by December 31st, because apparently when we miss that, the third quarter's also an estimate.
Right.
And so, generally, we try to avoid estimating the third quarter bill, if I'm correct.
I think we can't. I think you have to wait till fourth quarter in Delaware. I think, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, because you can't...
We have the deadline for a reason either way, and I understand that. So, what was the date you were saying, Jessica, for the meeting, the 17th?
Yeah, we were talking about the 17th. Ellen said that it's usually held on a Tuesday, and the following Tuesday is Thanksgiving week, so we think that it would be really challenging to...I mean, I don't know, with COVID, people probably aren't going to be traveling as much this year, but I think it's still pretty challenging to get an engaged...
I think that most people, when they travel, travel the day before on Wednesday. I don't think...I mean, some probably do leave before the weekend, but I don't think... That's a hard call. I like the extra week of time to see how the collections are going and see what we have come in, because we're talking about four weeks from now, and we don't have much time to open and close a warrant and collect things that people want to put on it.
Right.
I don't know of any purchases people are looking for. I know we put...who do we put off? Fire chief or police chief or something, you said, "Wait for special."
Thought we did again.
On the brush truck.
I don't think it was like last year, but it was on...
The brush truck for the fire. We asked them to put it off and wait for special to see where we're standing with this money.
Right, so part of what we would need to vote on, Jean let me know that because our town meeting was held after June 30th, that there was an issue with processing all of our free cash expenditures, so we have to go and re-vote all of those free cash expenditures.
I was told that we got an extension on free cash...
The state gave us an extension.
Until the tax rate was set.
The Department of Revenue came and told Jean that we have to re-vote all of our free cash.
You need to double-check why, because the governor extended... The governor extended the free cash use up and through we set our tax rate.
I can...
That was part of not having an issue with delaying the meeting.
Right, I can see if I can get more communications from Jean on what, you know, what she talked to with DOR about, but it was...it's not understanding that DOR said because we had our town meeting after June 30th, that there was an issue with processing our free cash expenditures.
Okay.
And then there's also a free cash expenditure that we will need...let me see if I can pull up the email real quick, but to cover lost revenues from FY '21. So, in order to balance our FY '21 budget through revenues, we were $81,417 short, so we would need to have that covered by free cash as well.
How did that number change from town meeting? Did they know it was short at town meeting? I don't understand.
No.
Or is it short because of COVID expenses that haven't been reimbursed?
It was fourth quarter tax bills due by June 30th, so we didn't know if we had received all of those, not only fourth quarter, but also quarter three, because COVID allowed us to push everything to June 30th without...
We were a couple hundred thousand behind in revenues, yeah.
And my guess is by the time they went to close the books for FY '20, it still showed $80,000 short of the revenues necessary to balance the budget. So, she's probably saying $80,000 is the balance of money that we confirmed we received in FY '20 against the expenses in FY '20. It's possible since June 30th, we've still got some of those collections since, but I don't know if when you receive them that late, you can retroactively add them to the previous fiscal year, or if it technically rolls into free cash of you're now receiving revenues you thought you lost the previous year.
I was talking with the treasurer during this time, and I thought we made the benchmark of what we needed a couple of weeks before town meeting, so that's why I'm puzzled. Watching how far behind we were, what we're projecting, how much we actually needed to break even, and I thought we'd made that. So, I'd really like to clarify why it's off by 80. I thought at town meeting that we had hit the break-even point.
Okay, I'll follow up with Jean with those questions.
As we left, what, 300 in free cash or so?
We were off of by what?
Did we leave 300 in free cash?
We have...
I think we talked about it, but maybe somebody pushed the 285,000 of the ambulance as straight free cash.
Yep, so...
And I think that ate up a lot of what we were talking about.
Oh, that's right. We were going to hold it, and they didn't want us to hold it.
Yep, so we started with $634,774 in free cash, and we ended off at annual town meeting And after the balancing of the FY '21 budget, we will be at $36,569.
You're saying that balance would show how much?
After...
After the 80,000?
Yep, we will be $36,569.
I'd like to say that we're not going to have special town meeting, because what's the point? But we have to approve the 80 at the special town meeting, and we may have to re-vote the other issues. So, we're going to have to have a meeting...
Well, we're going to have to re-vote that ambulance. And it could go from free cash to borrowing, but then it goes from a majority to a two-thirds vote. At least, that's what I recall town council saying, is you require a two-thirds vote on any borrowing versus free cash. But I know the original capital plan showed a 10-year borrowing plan where you pay $30,000 a year and you pay it off.
Well, I'm well aware of what we proposed and asked for.
And it might...I'm just suggesting that...
But I understand that...
Might be a better way to revise that article, or I don't know if we're allowed to revise that article, or if we have to revise it on the floor, because it was previously voted and now we're confirming.
Okay.
Or are we starting fresh? You know, we probably need to find out if...we have to look at it as if we're starting fresh.
Yep.
The ambulance is ordered, I believe.
Yep. The contract is signed...
I believe it's ordered and going, so we...
She's out of the meeting next week, so, yep.
You know, right now, it's supposed to be funded.
I think it's more funding in the background than the commitment to the vendor across our fingers.
I'd be more inclined to let things lay as they are and deal with this with free cash next year in the spring. If we're coming up short in November, we'll start cutting, cut where we have to cut and reduce spending.
What do you mean, let it lie?
I don't want to revise the contract on the ambulance. We made an informed, intelligent request, and this is the way it was put through and suggested, and let it lie like it is. Borrowing for 10 years against the ambulance, I understand the objection, the ambulance is good for four years and is junk. So, you have six years of payment left on an ambulance that you've already used up, so it's a tough debt to swallow.
We can pay more than $30,000 a year, it's just...
We also...
It gives us play to work within our budget.
We also should have marijuana money that comes this April. I don't know who actually is...
We just got an email on that. This year is going to be lower, because everybody got held up on licensures and starting, et cetera. Maybe next year will help.
Well, I assume Dean grew.
Well, that's the email we got.
Not from Dean, though, right? From the other guy?
Yeah, from Dean.
He got held up on licensing? So, I didn't get that email?
He got a delay in licensing for, I think it was potentially the outdoor growth. I forget which one, but it slowed him up, so he could only get part of his facility going. Have to review the email again, but it was something between the indoor versus the outdoor...
When did that come?
Late today.
Okay.
Like, I didn't even notice it until I sat down ready for the meeting, so...
And I would assume the outdoor licensing this year didn't get through in time with the holdups from the planning board posting hours.
And I can't recall which way it went, you know, whether it was outdoor or indoor, but the email does describe that...
He grew outdoor last year.
He did make some production on one of the two sides of that production.
At the outdoor grow, they got approximately 40% capacity for 2020, and their first indoor crop is estimated to be, the yield will be about 85% with their...
That's where the indoor worked better than outdoor this year, okay. Because, yeah, the outdoor was the add-on licensure, right?
Right, the claim was he's under the size license, he can grow in or out with his license, and there must have been a...it seemed illogical that that would be the case, and maybe the state said no. I don't know. I'll have to get to that email and look at it. I went through everything this last night and this morning, I didn't see anything new, so...
No, it came through about 10 minutes before the meeting started, so...
Yeah.
So, I mean, there'll be some money that will come in probably there. I mean, it's not going to be huge money, but something. I don't know if either outside grows got going for either Tom or for, you know, the Higgins one. I don't know if they got in the ground or not. I would tend to think no, because it was really, you know, saying no.
It took almost a bit July to get the lower license...
Yeah, they need to be in the ground like in May, so if they did plant, they'd have
So, it does look like...
We're going to have to do a meeting.
I would recommend, if we're going to open up a special town meeting, I would recommend we verify with some department heads if they identify anything critical, and then submit the entire list of all the other items Jean said we have to repeat.
Yep.
So that we can...
Decide whether or not we're going to rewrite that.
That, but also, it's going to be kind of like an open it and close it warrant.
Right.
It's not going to be an open it for a week.
No.
And this is nothing against the general public, but if the general public has random thoughts, you should speak to different departments. And if they support it, we'll listen, but if they don't, then you're going to have to wait. Like, I wouldn't necessarily want to open this up to general public warrant requests at the time, because we don't have the money.
We've got to make sure that we don't have to before we say that. We may have a publication requirement or so long.
Well, I agree, and that's what I meant. I don't know if there's a minimum warrant period, but we talked before...
We'll target the minimum...
It seems like it could keep it narrow.
We'll target the minimum window, target that, and we'll decide what we want to do. And we can add or delete an option to refinance the ambulance up till we post for the warrant, so we'll hold off on deciding that.
But that has to be determined on the very first meeting in November, signed off, so warrants can be issued within a week. So, we have the 14-day requirement?
14 days, right.
14 from 23 puts you at nine. Our meeting is on the 2nd? Okay, so that gives us seven days from our meeting. It sounds like we're probably going to need a second meeting. One meeting to refuse to open warrant...
So, you're not talking...
And then one meeting to draft the warrant to sign.
Right.
So, you're talking November 24th, not November 2nd, 17th. Because 14 days from the 17th is a third.
Right.
Which is earlier than we can do anything. We'd have to do it now.
Right, was she recommending the 17th or the 28th, whatever date that was?
They recommend the 17th, because it's further from Thanksgiving. But I think if it's two days before Thanksgiving, I don't think a lot of people are going to travel right now.
I weigh in on that.
Yes, sir.
Our quorum is 50. If you guys wanted to lower our quorum, you could do that, and that might help, but I personally am skeptical you're going to get a 50 quorum on the 24th. I think your odds are a lot better on the 17th. People have to pick up their kids from college, right? There's going to be a lot of distractions. People just aren't going to bother going to town meeting, because they're getting ready for the holiday. You know, I think as much as the government tells people not to get together with their family on Thanksgiving, you know people are going to get together with their family on Thanksgiving, so I think your odds of getting quorum are better on the earlier date, and if you're going to go for the 24th, I'd recommend you guys consider a lower than quorum.
Well, the only issue I'd be worried about the quorum on, unlike town meeting, I'm not worried about lower quorum, because we're just reaffirming the things we already voted in for the most part, and doing mandatory coverage of our overage from last year, overspending. So, I'm not too worried if we have to bump the quorum this time. But if we're going to talk about refinancing the ambulance, and that's where I wouldn't want the quorum dropped. If we do decide to try to refinance, I would make sure we have at least a minimum, you know, before we change what the, you know, decent outcome we had for our town meeting. I don't want to overdo that vote with a small quorum.
On top of that, we've also got to remember that the finance committee has a role in this, a significant role.
Right.
And so, we've got to include the amount of time they can fit in to recommend anything regarding this, so...
So, now, if we're working backwards from the 17th, 14-day publication brings us to the third. Our meeting is supposed to be when?
November 2nd.
So, we...that's really tight.
We've got two weeks to go through an open warrant process, meet to vote on it, draft the warrant, include the finance committee in the review process, so that on the 2nd, we can approve the warrant and sign it, so on the 3rd, they can be posted for a 17th meeting.
This is why I want the 24th. I still want to do it as quickly as we can, but if everything doesn't go absolutely perfect, you know, we've got to rewrite the draft once, or something happens, we lose all our timing.
We also have another option, not to say two or three days makes a big difference, but it doesn't have to be a Tuesday. So, we can do it on Thursday, Friday, or even Saturday. It might not be a bad idea to think about, and I will listen to anybody else that has comment, is Saturday, the 21st, a day where you might actually be able to get quorum, because you can fit it in at a reasonable two-hour window.
2:00 in the afternoon on a Saturday?
Yeah, or even if family members say 10:00 works better, because I don't really know...I'm so...my household is such a two-person household, no kids, I really don't understand the impact of...
There's not a lot of, like, kid soccer or things like that still going on, so both towns in the Commonwealth have been doing it on Saturdays for...
We could pick 10 or 11. I mean, I wouldn't go...I'd like to do it at 8, but you know, no one's...you see, that's what I'm saying. I just seem to get up at 6 and do it at 8, but I don't think that's going to be a...
And then we've got a different venue.
Fashionable for most people.
Do we have a place where we can get 50 people together, or are we...can we work it out in some combination of...
Well, you could fit 50, and you could fit 100 in models in space.
Where?
The normal venue, we could have in space the people, that's not a problem for there.
Well, it's making sure that the venue can accommodate all those that want to show up, not just the minimum.
And that's where the high school had offered before. I think if we use the middle school gym. High school gym, middle school gym?
High school.
I forget what she does in bottom is high school.
Oh, I don't know about that from...
I think it's a high school gym, yeah. The middle school gym, I think, is in the center of the school.
The gym that was close to where we did our town meeting?
Yeah, I believe that's a high school gym.
Yeah.
But that certainly is...there's lots of room in the bleachers that people could space, and you could put seats on the floor, and you could certainly accommodate many, many people there. So, that might be the place to do it, so we need to check with the school if that would be available for Saturday, the 21st.
21st, you know? I'm also open, like, the 21st sounds like, I think, a good spot to push, but if it comes to Thursday or Friday night, starting at 7:00, and they say, "We can't give you Saturday, but we can give you Thursday night,"
Well, I kind of like the idea...
Because if you're trying to make this work, we don't have a lot of choices in the matter.
I kind of like the idea for a special doing it on a Saturday. It's not going to kill someone's whole day. Everyone can make it, and the next question is, are we going to be overcrowded if we make it on Saturday? And that's my real worry, is that we might have more people come, because it's on a Saturday afternoon, they can, but given the nature of what's on it, I don't think it's going to overdraw, but I think it will give us more people available. You know, most people, most, not all, most people are not working or running home from work, or trying to feed the kids before work. If it's at 10:00 or 11:00, breakfast is done, lunch can be a little later, and we can get it done, and we're not worried about feeding kids and things like that. So, I dare say maybe just 10:00 Saturday. I think that's reasonable, that people could be there. Josh, what do you think about 10:00 Saturday, the 21st?
I think it sounds really good. I think if you want to have it inside, I think that particular venue is good, because there's a big door that's leased directly outside, which will help with front air.
There's two, yep.
But I would recommend that you get our board account agent involved and make sure that they're comfortable with it. You know, I'm perfectly happy doing it outside in the parking lot with everyone wearing a parka. That's okay with me, too.
Well, this is why we're still looking into the tent, and we may have a tent by then, and we could do it outside. If that works and we could get the tent, the size we're talking about should accommodate, you know...
Could accommodate 50, but it might be difficult to get again if 100 show up.
No, 110 by 50 was the size? So, if you go 50 across, you go zero, and every six...
150 by three square feet occupancy.
So, you could have nine across, then if it's every six feet per row, and we just fill up 90 of that, you could have 15, 16 rows. So, 16 rows at nine is 90, and 54 is 144 we could put inside in that tent. And that still leaves us a 20-foot buffer up front to have a table and stage, you know, a place for people to come in, and, you know, they have to go down, you know, you walk down the middle and just go off, just eat and sit, but that...as I'm saying, if that size tent comes in, that will do what we need to do. So, Dylan, any comment or input before we look to move this?
No, that date seems like it makes sense, but it sounds like we can figure out some of the details when it comes to it being indoors or outdoors a little bit later, so that works for me, and it's a good idea.
All right, the only other question is how long are we going to open and close this warrant for? We don't have to do that right now, but our next meeting, we have to. We have to declare the period for the warrant.
So, Ellen told me, because this is my first experience with a town meeting, so she said that you can open and close a warrant in the same thing.
We do that often, but I don't know if we initially have to have the initial warrant available for public. In other words, at a normal town meeting, people need but 10 signatures or 25 signatures, "Good night, I'm on the warrant." On a special town meeting, they need 100 signatures.
Right.
Virtually impossible to get if you open and close the warrant in a day or something, or even two days. So, I don't know if we're obligated...you know what? If you want to leave the room, excuse yourself a minute, you could walk out in the hall and ask Ellen that, because she's out there for the early vote, and we'll get our answer. And then, once we have that answer, we can look... And then, once we have that answer, we can look for a motion to set the date and open and close the warrant period when she gets back in. And like I said, the things we'll put on it, things we have to put on it, will verify that the items that were passed do need to be re-voted, because I'm with you, the governor said we had our free cash available to spend up until we said it, so that unless there was some other procedural issue they didn't like in it, we'll, we'll look into that. It may have been because we batch voted things. And that could be the issue, we have to bring them up one at a time. You could have had an issue with the expediated for that.
There's nothing you need to re-vote those things. Talk to town council about whether it's possible to just do that with one warrant article. If it isn't, then you actually have to have a separate warrant article for every item there. You could certainly do a consent agenda to bundle them together and just say, hey, we're just procedurally re-voting things. You already voted yes on it, and you're kind of meeting all in favor.
Right, but Josh, it seems, it seems well, so the governor said we could spend that cash.
Less daunting to people and more encouraging of people if you get a few articles on the warrant.
Right, but we need to verify what our issue was. Our issue may have been that we did a consent agenda on those. And maybe it wasn't allowed for the free cash.
We did all the free cash as separate articles. We did the consent on the operating budget, and if I'm correct, Josh, didn't we separate?
There's no issue with a consent agenda. The issue, yeah, the issue that it sounds like you're talking about is just procedural one, about having to do the votes at a certain time.
Yeah, and that would seem strange, because the governor certainly said that we had until we set our tax rate to spend that free cash.
I also don't know what re-voting them would do, because if there was a defect with voting them in the first place after the end of the year, it's still after the end of the year.
Right, so we're gonna have to figure that out before we get it going. So what did Ellen have to say?
So Ellen said that we can open it now, open the warrant now, and then close it for the next weekend.
We know we can do that.
Are we looking to add another meeting between now and the first one in November? It wasn't really my desire.
I don't think we need to. If we get the extra time, if we need to, we can throw another one in a couple days out, because we have the extra four days now. So if we had to and something's not ready in the second, we can have another meeting on the fifth or sixth and finalize it then. But I don't think we'll need... I think it'll go smoothly, I just, I like, you know me, I don't wanna put it to the ninth hour and eleventh hour and wait. At least this way, you have the days. It's still planned on just having a regular meeting, closing it on a regular time. We can have interaction through the administrator to verify things as we go. And she can clarify things independently with us if we need to, so we can make sure that it goes together. I don't think it'll be a problem, but I feel better having a couple days. And I'd rather not plan another one unless we have to.
So the only question I have here is if if our next meeting ends up being November second. And we did build a little cushion by pushing this to the twenty-first.
Four days.
But then we find that the school says for some reason we can't use that space.
Well, we'll know that before then.
Right, we'll know that.
We'll have to set a new meeting. But if we say that we opened the warrant today and we're not closing it to the second, we can't officially finalize our vote prior to the second, which means we can't... So if we've got to do it on that Tuesday or something, we're back to pinching how quick we vote, how they draft, and then we re-vote that the draft is accurate, and then we sign. We're just saying, we've gotta be careful...
All we need to do right now...
We don't have to be at a meeting to close the warrant.
Yeah, but, no.
So we could technically, open the warrant now, close it next Monday.
Okay.
And then if for some reason you get feedback that a venue's not acceptable, we can, how long do we...
How long do we have to leave the warrant open for, was my question. Not, I know we can leave it open for two weeks. Is there an amount of time that we must leave it open to allow the public have input and access to it? Is there a minimum open time we need? Because I know we can, we could say it opens tonight, it closes Thursday night. We can just do that. It's automatically closed Thursday night, we don't need to meet. We're gonna order the opening and closing now, tonight. If we need to in the future, we can have a selectmen meeting, open the warrant, adjust it, and close it at a given meeting. And we could do that if we need to. So we're, rest assured, we'll get in anything we need to. If there's something, up until we post it, we can change it. Once we post it, it's done.
Right.
So as far as the meeting place, Matt gets canned on us. We're gonna ask for the meeting place now. If they say no in four days, then we still have all that time until we post it to find a meeting place. We don't need the meeting place until we post the warrant, because we say it will be held at this time. Right now, we're saying there's gonna be a special town meeting on this date. When we post it, we have to have all the information, specific time and location, so. I appreciate the concern for if the school backs out, but if, I'm sure if they say we can use the room, the auditorium at that date, that they're not gonna back out. And we'll know within a few days if that doesn't work for the school. You know, we've talked to Mr. Devine and with Ms. Muir, and we'll find out probably pretty quickly. So, that being said, if you check with Ellen again, is there a minimum open time we owe the public?
Yes.
Because we're not looking to add articles, we're looking to get this business done. I still think that any funds we're short are gonna commit eventually. I don't think people are gonna let their property tax go and let their properties go because of the issues here. Most people had the lost work, got bonus money for several months, had an extra six hundred on the top of unemployment. I think you might have it pretty good.
Can I ask what's the downside of opening it tonight?
Oh, we're gonna open it tonight. We're just, Josh, if Ellen says we have to leave it open for five days, then it's gonna close in five days.
We don't. I think I already know that.
Oh, it's...
The only requirement that's a little funny about special town meetings is the fourteen-day, four-three-year part, and then the seven-day.
So we'll probably open it tonight and close it Wednesday night. And then we'll, or even tomorrow night, we'll just open it for a day and close it. And we'll put whatever articles we need in, and we'll open and close whatever meeting we need to to add the remaining articles. So we have our meeting on November second, we can reopen the warrant, add the list of articles we have drafted, and close it at the end of the meeting. And that gives the office the three or four days to put that list together and have it posted.
Okay, so Ellen said that there, that Attorney Baird has said in the past that we do not have to have a set amount of time.
Which is what Josh just said. I already know the answer to that. We don't need it, now that you left the room again.
Hey, I've got my stuff, so...
Actually, as I'm reading Master General Law, you don't necessarily have to open the warrant. What it is, is the town can force you to have a meeting by getting signatures either for a meeting and then signatures for items you want on it. There's nothing here even talking about opening the warrant to the general public. It seems to be like just a respectful way of dealing with the members of your community, giving them the option. But if we didn't open it, and we just said what's gonna be on it is what we want on it, I think we have the right to do that. But then people do have the ability to go and chase signatures and try to force an issue with we... We're fast-tracking something, not because we needed to, but because we're trying to avoid public interference.
Why don't we think about this? Why don't we think about setting our, our date tonight? So we look for a motion to set the date, and then we'll say that this warrant will open on Friday morning and close Friday afternoon, giving the department heads time to bring in the issues they have. So the department heads can turn their issues in Friday. In that daytime, the warrant will be open from, say, you know, seven AM Friday to five PM Friday. And, and that gives them time to put things in the warrant. And then you can email us all of the things that come, so, and make, you know, confirm with everyone by phone call that we know, we can look at it. And you can get that draft up and email to us, we can all review it before our meeting. So if we have any things we catch, we'll catch it pre-meeting. So hopefully, we're at the meeting on the second. It'll, it'll close out and be ready for posting without us saying, okay, you can post it once you change X, Y, and Z. I'd rather leave the meeting, so, but we can do all that via email, we don't have to meet for that, because we're gonna make the approvals now. And then, in theory, at our meeting on the second, we'll review the warrant publicly, and we will go through the articles, make sure we're all good with it, approve it, and say we can post it. And do we have to have the finance to get it before we post it?
Yes.
So we need to get, the posting's gonna be on the nth hour. That's gonna be posted in the last day, that's not a problem. We need to talk to finance and make sure, either they come to our meeting, zoom in our meeting, get a copy of this when we have it, whatever, so they're included, so they have time, so they can meet as a board and give their recommendations and get to the articles before we post that warrant.
Right. They do have a meeting on October twenty-second, so they may be...
Excellent, so they should have the same draft we should have before then. I'll look for motion then.
And you're recommending we close it?
I would say we open and close Friday, which is the, I don't have it off the top of my head, I could do it, but...
This Friday is the twenty-third.
Twenty-third, so I'd look for a motion to announce the special town meeting for the, my gosh, twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
I don't think we need to put the times, but we'd say from, you know, beginning at ten o'clock in the morning. And open, and open the warrant for that one.
Our next meeting, we can define those details in...
Yeah, so why don't we just do a motion to set the meeting day for special town meeting, and then we'll go ahead and do a vote for the warrant, to open and close the warrant on this Friday.
And make a motion that we plan to have the special town meeting on November twenty-first at ten AM.
I'll second that motion.
Hearing a motion to second that special town meeting on the twenty-first of November at ten AM. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Card, yes.
And O'Sullivan, yes. So we're set for the twenty-first, ten AM date to be, the location to be announced. And the next would be, let's just cover the warrant now. I'd say let's plan an opening at this Friday, which we said was the twenty-third? Friday, the twenty-third of October, at seven. I'll make a motion that we open the warrant from Friday, the twenty-third of November, at seven AM, and close it Friday, the twenty-third, at five PM.
I'll second that motion.
Are you fine with that, or would you rather set it a more like an eight to four on Thursday while we actually have people in the office?
Oh, I'm thinking the wrong days. I withdraw my motion. Thank you, Matt.
No problem, it works.
So I would make a, I'll make a new motion that we open the warrant on Thursday, the twenty-second of October, at eight AM, and close it at four PM, to keep with our office hours in town.
I second that motion.
Hearing a motion to second to establish your warrant for the twenty-second of October, from eight to four AM to PM. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Card, yes.
And O'Sullivan, yes. Yeah, that would be, everyone having to email on their day off Friday. Not very good. I forget I work Friday, so I assume everyone does.
And that'll give you a week to want either draft up the warrant if it's what we already expected.
Well, email it.
Or if new items come in, you can just email us, or we're aware of it, and we can decide if we need another meeting.
Yeah, you can just say a list of articles. This number, numeric, this list of a number, and send it to us. But we're gonna find out, like Josh said, if we did something wrong procedurally in that free cash, it's gonna be wrong again, because it was still after that date, we're doing the same thing.
Right.
So either they need a different, they must need a different language than we used, or they just sent us that in error.
Okay.
But we should clarify that. So you got a little bit of work this week. Not, you never have any, right? All right, Personnel Committee, CMRPC Selectmen Alternate Appointment. So we have the request from CMRPC that we have Doug Martin as our CMRPC representative for the town, and they want us to appoint a, a member of the community as an alternate for that.
Did we receive anybody applying to be that?
But again, I, I don't think it would be an issue to appoint one of the selectmen members, yeah.
No, we could. I always like to see community involvement, and I, and I'll address this again now, because I've done it with different committees in different meetings and things in the past. Be it in planning board meetings, or the marijuana meetings we had from, you know, from the hearings of this. It's not that I don't wanna be involved in things. We are involved in things, and we do put a lot of time into what we do here. And it's important that all the committees be allowed to operate autonomously without our interference. And I worry that when we keep putting selectmen in different committees, it, it looks like we're overbearing, we're overreaching, and we're interfering with other committees. That some appointed, some elected, but people need to be allowed to do their tasks, their jobs, and their wishes without feeling like we're trying to coerce or change it. Our job as selectmen, first and foremost, is to oversee the town's finances and the rules of the town, the, you know, the bylaws and the day-to-day functioning. That's what we do, we just, we oversee basically the finances of the town and the operations of the personnel. That's, that's what we do. And that's a big undertaking in itself. We rely heavily on the administrator for that, and the administrator assistant for that. That being said, the other town departments are voted in, a lot of the committees are voted in. The department heads are trusted, selected by us, but trusted to run the departments, and that's why we get to pick them. But we shouldn't have an overinvolvement in a lot of these things. So I'd rather not get into another committee and do a committee if we don't have to. That being said, since no one stepped up, certainly one of us can, it's an alternate position, I don't think we have to make all the meetings and do it, but we can certainly fill it. But this is why I'm always resistant. When people ask to come to a planning board meeting, it's, that's the planning board's meeting, and they're an elected board. They, you know, the couple that I did go to in the beginning, people always turn to the selectmen and ask us questions, it's not our meeting. And, you know, that, it just sits wrong with me, that's all.
The one thing I'd say about CMRPC, though, is despite the word planning being involved, they do a lot in support of various grant applications, management of the paperwork for grants, because that's a lot of times the biggest burden on a town. And so making sure that we can get an alternate that is committed and showing up and participating is rather important. So I just wanted to I wanted to bring that up, because it kinda coincides a little bit with what Greg was saying, is even though there's three of us, and you'll see further down the agenda, we have a lot of commitments that we have to do as members of the Board of Selectmen. And this is one that we really could use the help, to have someone else from either the general public or other various boards, but definitely a resident of every, that is interested in being an alternate to represent the selectmen at the CMRPC meetings. So we really could use the help. And again, when we get down into the QRS, QRSD contract negotiations, you'll probably get a better understanding of what I'm about to say.
I know they're pushing for this, but let's, let's leave it open for our next meeting, and hopefully someone will give us some time and donate some time for this. It's, you know, if you're interested in the goings-on and, you know, community development sort of thing, this, this is something to get involved in. You know, they look for grant money, they develop communities, they help communities, they, they do a lot. But it's, because it does so much, it's, it's a big chunk that takes away from the other things that we do. And plus, we all work full-time anyways and have our own things to take care of outside of that. So hopefully, somebody will come up in the next two weeks, and...
Could you push that out on the town Facebook page as well, that we're looking for people?
And if it's not, then we'll just have to pick it up next time. But we'll give it, give it two more weeks, because I would like to see that get filled outside of us. Two wage authorizations. We have Paula Barcas Fani, municipal assistant. We have the job description written up. Have you guys had a chance to read through the description?
I have.
I have, yes.
I've, I've read through most of it, but not everything a hundred percent. Most of it's pretty standard, but the main part is what I looked at that describes her tasks, and I'm happy with that. Anybody have a motion for that?
Are we talking about the wage authorization or the job description?
Job description.
I make a motion we approve the updated and revised job description that combines the cemetery assistant... the ass- assessing clerk, and
Assistant accountant.
Assistant accountant into one position.
Municipal Assistant One.
All under a, is it a CL three?
Yes.
In the classification plan.
I'll second that motion.
Right, the top, technically dis- disentitled, okay. All right, I have a motion in a second to, um, accept the, um, new job description as discussed, do we have any more, um, discussion on this? Hearing now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor of approving this description position?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes, that brings us to a wage authorization for Paula Barcas. She's been doing two part-time jobs for the town, and using the proper scales, her hourly wages and where she should be now. She's moving to full-time hours with this third position, the description, uh, that we just approved, so she'll be a, um, benefit employee now, and I'm looking for a motion to approve her, um, new wage authorization at eighteen forty-seven hour.
I'll make a motion, we approve the wage authorization for Paula Barcas.
I second it.
Motion to second to approve the wage authorization, we have any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes, next, once again, I will abstain from this one, we have, uh, David Moran, Fire Department Three, minimum at seventeen eleven an hour.
I make a motion that we accept the wage authorization for David Moran as an on-call firefighter EMT, seventeen eleven an hour.
All right, I have a, uh, motion to second to approve the wage authorization, all, for, uh, David Moran, any further discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And O'Sullivan abstain. Request to use town property, a boot drive by the Barry Lions Club, I don't know what they're raising money for, just generally for the club, similar to the old, um, fill the boot the fire department used to do for muscular dystrophy, they've done that, I believe just once before they did that, and they're successful for them, so they're looking to do it for a fundraiser. The Lions Club does do a lot of things in town, they put up a lot of functions, participate on the commons, um, so you guys have any comments or discussion before we look for motion? Or we can just hear a motion?
The only comment is just to have them, uh, work with the police department, just to confirm that the police department doesn't have an issue, and if they do, to accommodate the request of the police chief.
Sounds, sounds reasonable, hello?
Hi, um, I talked to Tim Mara, he did talk to the police chief about that boot drive before he came up to fill out the request. So he's all set with the police chief.
Perfect.
Lions Club.
Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Oh, the chief is here and has his hand up.
Oh, boy.
Let's entertain the chief.
There we go.
Chief.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So he has come to us, and there will be traffic, uh, there'll be an officer assigned to each of their two drives, and be a little bit, so that they'll be safe.
Okay.
So, oh, if we approve the use of town property, okay, yep.
Is, is you requiring them a detail, or are we just assigning officers to those areas?
No, we're just assigning an officer to each one of their, uh, locations.
Okay, okay, good, thank you, all right, look for a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the use of town property as presented by the Barry Lions Club for October twenty-fourth.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the use of town property for the Lions Club for the boot drive, um, any further discussion?
I guess, uh, should we, or, or should we roll in a, um, a fee waiver in there, should we discuss that first, or discuss that second?
Uh, either, either if you want to modify the motion, or if you want to have the, this, this is a discussion period, so, do we want to waive the fee? It is, um, once again, it's the Lions Club, um, you know, it's an organization that does a lot in town. We still have profit, nonprofit fees, but, um, I, I, once again, anything like this, I feel like taking the fifty dollars out of their coffer takes more away from them than it does to us, you know, they're out there literally collecting coins for a fundraiser, I think drawing money back.
I'll modify the motion, uh, to include a fee waiver.
Okay, have a.
I support that.
All right.
He's modifying the motion to accept by adding in a waiver of the fee.
So we have a motion to accept the use of town property for Lions Club with the modification that they will have a waived fee, and they had a second with that, waived motion?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Urban, aye.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Strategic Management Solutions Recommendations, that was an interesting read, um, not a huge surprise in things if we've read our audit to come through. Jessica, did you put this on specifically, do you want to discuss it, or is this just on because it came up for the, uh, did somebody ask for this?
So this is, uh, the Strategic Municipal Solutions, they created a report for the boards this afternoon, so this is just their communications to you on.
Okay, I just, I was just, if somebody asked for this specifically, I was defer, let them talk about, did you guys get, get a chance to read this?
I got a quick, a quick read, um...
We don't need to get into it now, then, we can read this and bring it up in the next meeting if we want to discuss it.
I do appreciate it, and I would like to look into it more, but I'd like a little more time to get into it.
That's why I was checking, I read it, read it through last night, and, um, not overly surprised from the things we've heard in our audits in the past, so, at least to have an outside source make some of these same recommendations. We, including Jessica, can look at this during the week, and figure out what we can do, um, to, to try to get in line with some of these. Uh, the payroll issue has been something I've talked about for years, and we have to fix it, um, currently, we sign a warrant, right before the, when the warrant doesn't go out, people don't get their checks, the vendors, until we sign it, but we can't hold paychecks, so the paychecks go out, so it's not a question of saying, we're gonna stop sending paychecks before we sign the warrant for them, we can't, we need to get, we need to make it occur in a way that we can get into the office and be that assigned, one selectman is a designated signer, that goes in on a set date and signs that warrant before the checks are issued, um, that's fine. I mean, payrolls, this is, this is shielded through department heads, if there are errors, they can be corrected after the fact, um, so the payroll's gonna have to go out. But we just need to get somebody physically in, because that warrant is generated, and it goes to payroll, to Harper Services, we just have to get someone there to sign it before the checks released. That's one thing I do want to discuss in this, and that's something I...
Could you give a better timeline of
It's tight.
When time sheets currently are given to the accountant? And when that gets processed, and then put before us to review, and then how that lines up with when the information has to get harbors and checks get cut? Because that's, that's something I would like to know, to see which way things move, to maybe help provide more time for someone to do what they need to do.
Right, so right now, we have, um, Alex, our new treasurer collector, is pushing to have, um, people have their time sheets in earlier than what's been traditional practice, so Tuesday afternoon is when the payroll has to be all set through our system, um, so we are having all the employees send in their time sheets by Thursday afternoon, Monday morning at the latest, and then it goes to, uh, Janine, who, um, she's the one that processes all of that information, and then the paychecks are released Thursday morning.
So we don't necessarily have to see it before it goes to Harper's, as I said, the department heads responsible, um, to balance with their employees, and it's up to the, the treasurer, it's part of the discussion, is who does the payroll, who does what, to keep track of the vacation, sick hours, the deductions off the payrolls, and, and make sure the numbers are done and added right and tabulated, um, and when it goes to Harper's, they just simply write the check. We legally should be signing this warrant before the checks are given out to the, to the personnel.
Right, so that'll be like Wednesday.
We could have somebody come in Wednesday night and sign a copy of that warrant, if somebody could commit to it.
And this is my confusion, because normally we get a notice on a Friday, that a warrant's ready to sign, and then Monday or Tuesday, it's there for us to sign.
Right, tho- those checks for the payroll were already paid a week before, two days before.
And that's my question, is why are we being notified on a following Friday about a warrant that apparently checks were cut a week before? And that's where I want to figure out, what's holding up the warrant development if we're able to put enough paperwork in place to get it to Harper's to cut checks?
Right.
I'm just curious, and I'm not trying to knock it, it may have been a, previously, it was just more efficient to combine warrants rather than a pay warrant one week and a payroll warrant another.
Well, there's another difference.
And I just wanted to get a little more on that.
The A and P goes out every two weeks, and it, and people, it, it gather for two weeks, someone could turn their, you know, bill in today, but it doesn't go out till two weeks from now, till that Friday we sign it, once we sign it, they get paid, if we don't sign it, those checks get held until we sign it, that's why they harm us to come sign them. But the payroll checks are going out four days after the weekends, so you work Monday through Thursday.
Payroll is bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly, yep.
So they're both on a two-week schedule.
Is it bi-weekly? But, but once again, when they end it, the point is, when, when they end it, when they, when they end the A and P warrant, we have a full week to, we have to go pay that. It usually goes out the, the whole week after the fact, but when, when you end the two-week payroll period, they need to be paid in three days, where the A and P, when that period ends, they get paid eight days later. So a vendor can get paid up to three weeks after they submit their bill, at the end of the two-week period, the warrant's put together, and we get notified to sign it, and we sign it, and then the following Thursday, they'll get it, I mean, it, it winds up longer for that side.
No, I'm just trying to find out.
But there's no cushion.
Let's just say you have a new hire, and they start the day after your last payroll period ends. They don't get a check for two weeks, right, they actually work two weeks, and then they get the check the third week.
Right, so what we're trying to do is...
So they're also, in other words, we built in a two-week delay compared to when checks, payroll gets submitted versus when checks are expected. So we have seven business days minimum to process this, from the date that the time sheet's submitted to the date that the check should be sent back, it's almost like two working weeks, right?
Time sheets are submitted, um...
Tuesday, right now, or Wednesday.
Right now, um, you know, we're trying to shift it to the Thursday prior, but it's...
I should say for the period ending, so what is it, is it a Sunday to Saturday week that we pay against?
Yes, yep.
So for the period ending Saturday, they have a week and a half before they're gonna get that check?
No.
No, because, so I'll, I'll give you an example, because today, we're in pay, this is a pay week, so, um, we sub- I submitted my pay sheet today for last week and the week prior. And so then I'll, we'll get paid on Thursday for last week and the week prior, so there is just that.
So you get it, so you have from Sunday to Thursday?
The pay, the pay period...
I hear you, but it doesn't make sense while we're doing a two-week payroll cycle if we're not using two weeks to actually process the payroll.
But, yeah, I see where you're going.
We're squeezing ourselves into one week to turn over that, probably shouldn't have, but we're stuck with history.
This is part of the discussion I had with Andrew about this, and when I got to that point, I said, well, we could pay short one week and let it delay a week, or we could, you know, hold off an extra week, but now you're screwing with people's real life on steady, regular paychecks, and this is part of why I didn't push it back then, and Andrew had suggested maybe we try to find a period, someone to designate, someone to come in and sign it. All we have to do is get in and sign it, but if we let the paperwork go as it is and it works, we just need someone to be designated to sign those, the warrant, and we can declare as a board that one selectman shall sign the warrant.
Right, but you're still giving that one person the twenty-four-hour window to get in and sign something.
That's, that's the problem.
They're committed every two weeks for that Wednesday, no matter what's going on in their life.
Or we can say any one signature is fine, as long as one signature on it comes from the selectman, it can go, then any of us could go sign it.
And I got you, but that doesn't make sense, because it's not worth signing.
But, but that's, I didn't, I, and this is a frustration I got looking at.
Send me the warrant cover letter, and I'll sign it and scan it back to you, I'm just saying.
But that's my frustration, the only...
I'm not big on rubber stamp signatures.
The only way to fix it is to, is to mess with the scheduling that people receive their paychecks, and nobody's gonna want that, nobody. You know? We'll hold off an extra week, but then you get three weeks' check later, well, no, I needed that money now, I have bills coming out at a time on that check, it, it's, it's, you know, it's doable, I think it'll make problems with people. It's not nice to say we have to go in, and one of these, one of us has to come in that day and sign it, I don't think we're allowed to in our form of government, have the administrator sign it. If we were a larger town and we had a town manager, the town manager can sign it instead, but I don't think we have the option with an administrator.
But we do have the option, if we so chose, to say, in six months, plan on the fact you're gonna get one week's pay, and then you're gonna wait two weeks, and then you're gonna get full payback. As long as we're making sure we're paying for them, we don't, we're not shorting them a check, we're delaying a week for them to receive that. Give them a six-month warning so they can plan for that week, and maybe we can get some feedback as to what month in the year that's best to try on. I'm not trying to say, but it's not something that we shouldn't ask, just because we seem, it's overwhelming, you give enough notice, and you work with the employees in the town, because we're not talking about the town, we're talking about the small number of employees we have, and let them know that, yeah, next August second, or next
I know.
Plan for it, because we have to do this in order to address the actual administrative duties required to do this.
Because I, I seriously, I've been, I've had discussions with this, not with the board, but with the administrator for a year and a half, two years in this.
And I, I don't know how it would affect, um, our unions, I don't know if we would be able to, to make that decision without having to talk to them.
Because their, their pay is still coming, they're still getting paid, it's just gonna change, change the period.
I just think giving them notice is so much better than just, I mean legally, I don't know how much they can come after us, other than that sucks and they hate us, and I'm not asking for that, I'm not saying let's just throw something down their throat, but if they get reimbursed for the time they spend, we didn't short them, it's just a week late.
But I, but yeah, typically, if you work Monday through Friday, Friday, on that second Friday, you get a check, then two weeks later, you get a check, but we're, we're kind of off, you know, Monday, you get a check on the first Friday, then you finish that period, you know?
Choose the month of five weeks, and... Every three months is five, five weeks, choose the one that would have been three checks that time, they're just down to two, and then the next month, they get three, because it rolls it into that.
All right, so let, we'll, we can't, we can't...
If you're looking at a monthly budget, that might be the best way to approach.
Yeah, so, so anyways, I just wanted to pull that little pieces out of this, because these things have kicked around, we will look at this, we'll readdress this at the next meeting, November second, there's other, there's other good points they put up in here, um, you know, redundant eyes on things and, and stuff, it's, it's, it's what we wanted from them, it's what you talked about, you know, we talked about maybe getting some kind of, this is like an audit from them, which was very nice of them to do.
An audit that provides recommendations, not just an ad.
From an out, right, from an outside source.
This is what we do.
And it does...
And figure out what to do about it.
And it does, um, line up with the things we hear from our annual audit, um, what we get, that they say it's, it's not urgent, we're in good shape, but these things you could look at, this is down the same alley. Dylan, anything before we move on?
I think that would suggest that they would listen to, like, a follow-up, right, like, if we had questions, they would participate in a conference call or something, that...
Yes. Yep, they'd be glad that we're...
Yes, yep.
Dylan, anything to add on this topic before I push on?
No further, no further comments.
All right, well, we'll take a look at that, that, um, two-page, uh, letter, if you would, and we'll discuss it on the next meeting.
Would it be helpful for me to invite Dee to the next meeting, who was the, um, individual who served in the treasurer's office?
Um, sure.
Yeah.
It would be, I think, I, I... It would be, I think, I, it is, this, some of these are talking about personnel, job descriptions and what they do, and yeah, it'd be, be smart to get that input in there. And also invite Alex.
Yes.
Yes. Please continue, I'll be right back, just thirty seconds.
Sure. Well, the next... The next item on here is gonna be the QRSD Contract Negotiation Representative. Briefly, we have a letter from Quabens amassing for each of the five towns to send a select board member to be part of the collective bargaining unit for whatever contracts that they have out that are expired. So I don't know if this means teachers, janitorial, assistant staff, I really don't know what this, what this entails. But according to the district agreement for the regional school district, we should, each of our five towns have a select board member involved in these contract negotiations. So when Selectman Urban does return, we'll get more into that. Dylan, do you have any comments you want to make?
Comments on Google, we should select to fill this role for the negotiation, I don't have any comments at the moment.
No, just if you, any, any, anything to say about it in general, the collective bargaining, the contract with Quabbin, have you read the letter, such and such?
Uh, yeah, I've read the letter. Yeah, I don't have any comments beyond that. I would like to see who on the board is interested in nominating themselves for this. I'm not convinced that I am, that I want to nominate myself, but I am curious what Mr. Urban says when he comes back.
Well, my, my concern always, again, the same with, with the last one we just discussed for the CMRPC. I often leave by 7:00 AM and come home at 7:00 at night. I don't know what the normal meeting hours would be for a board like this, but my, my availability is usually slim. I mean, I left work, it's a gorgeous day today, I left work two hours early that I'd like to, to make sure I'm here for the meeting. And anytime we talk about, you know, there's these negotiations, as you guys know from doing other contract negotiations, that, that the timing can be difficult, the hours of the day they may choose. And that's always my reservation, that I'm not gonna be a good active participant. Given the situation of this year, the impacts I had of my ability to work in people's homes and things early on, I'm still trying to recover from that. So it's not a good time for me to give up, but I don't know when they're talking about time, you know? When it's slower, I might have more time, but...
Did you bring up the fact it is five contracts?
I don't know how many, I just know...
I confirm the school district, there are five separate contracts being negotiated.
What are they for? That's what I was just saying, I don't know what they're about.
We have teacher, custodial, food service, parent professionals, and office managers.
And assuming each one gets negotiated separately?
I would think so. Office managers under a contract there? How many offices do we have? Interesting.
You know, it's, it's, my guess is somehow that's a job description that defines a middle manager. So it can be unionized, because they're not management, but there's some level of management, it's like a superintendent for a construction project. It can still be union, but I think...
They can. Usually the big corporation is the owners and everyone working for them, except for maybe the main license holder that's overseeing the, you know? And usually they're the architect or not even necessarily a GC, but you know, not a license holder, but a license holder through architecture degree. But that's a whole nother ball of wax. So either you have interest in doing it or want to do it.
I definitely have interest. As we've all heard, every year at annual town meeting, votes up with the school budget, and what role does the selectman play in that? And like it or not, this is one of the roles we can play. We can participate in the negotiation of the labor contracts that potentially can be the basis for the standard school budget increase every year.
And this would probably include issues like retention and, you know? The school, they say they've laid people off over the years, when you look at their numbers, they seem to lay off here and pick up there and shuffle around, so they can say, we laid off two people in this school, we laid off one person from this, but usually you find they get picked up somewhere else. So I, I don't, I don't know how much their numbers have actually dwindled over the years. We had a good recession for, you know, probably eight years of it. And, you know, a lot, a lot of departments took a lot of big hits on their funds. You know, the school did not increase as much as they wanted to. They still have stayed a very hefty part of the budget. And yeah, I'd be interested to see. I don't know what their contracts look like, you know? I have no idea.
When was the last time that any of these five contracts were negotiated previously?
That's a good question. What's the term?
Probably three years.
We say probably, but we don't know.
I don't know for sure.
Generally...
That's generally, yeah.
You're not legally allowed to enter into contracts for more than three years without, at least at a municipal level, without...
Town vote.
An annual town meeting vote or some town vote. I don't know how a regional school district gets interpreted, because...
They're not attached.
It's a whole different world. So I don't know who they identify as the town members versus just...
Their regional school district, probably the school committee.
Right, so the school committee could be the representation that determines that. It could also be built into a...
So basically, we don't know for sure. We, we can, we can guess three years, but we don't know.
Question here, it, it in, just to read it more clearly as it's written in the letter, as you are aware, state statute allows select board members of the five district towns to select an individual select board member to serve with the Quabbin Regional School District School Committee in the collective bargaining process. They say they have a number of, we have a number of contracts that have expired, we expect to engage the municipal representative in negotiations in the very near future. We would appreciate that a select board member from one of the five district towns be appointed as soon as possible. Let's clarify the way they wrote that. We would appreciate that a select board member from one of the five district towns.
But it says that each of the towns is allowed to have a representative.
It may be a grammatical error in the letter.
Right, I see where you're going.
So we may wanna clarify, I'm thinking they just, they meant one select board member from each of the five towns. Or the first sentence was misworded, and they are saying one of the five towns can provide a...
Because it does say the state statute allows select board members, plural, of the five district towns to select an individual...
Oh, it says to select an individual select board member.
To serve.
So the five select board towns need to get together to appoint their one select board member. So my recommendation here is please reach out to the other five towns.
And clarify where she...
Clarify if they interpret it the same way I just did.
Right.
And then see how many towns have somebody offering to...
Because it says it allows the select board members, plural, of the five towns to select an individual single. So it does read very clearly that allows the select board members...
Right.
To elect in, of the five towns, that, that means all of us.
Of the fifteen select board members, we vote on one of us to participate as a member.
Well, some of the towns have five, so we have...
Some of our towns have five?
Don't, don't we, don't two have, I thought two had five.
I think it's, well, I know it's three in New Braintree, three in Hardwick.
Hubbard's and...
Hubbard's is the only one I would question if they got five, but I think they only got three.
Right.
But they might be five, I don't recall.
I thought, I seem to think we had the meeting of the school of one of the towns.
I think one of those five, but they're not part of our school district.
I thought someone in our district meeting, the meeting about closing, New Braintree, that one of the towns had five. Don't know.
I just don't recall, but I'll just find out.
Either either.
Yeah, I'll find out.
So I think that's what we need to do, is get with all of them. I would recommend that we see if we can, maybe we can do it, see if they'll do a remote meeting? And we can all jump in on the meeting together, talk about it, and I would throw in a couple other regional town agenda items.
Yep.
We had talked about getting like a quarterly regional town...
Yeah.
Meeting together.
Yep.
This might be a good way to get it started.
Okay.
Even if that means we pull it off night and do a Zoom meeting with everyone.
Yeah.
You know, something like a seven o'clock, something on a Thursday, some night, we could all pull it in.
Right.
Yeah. I would hope we could do it an hour, but I mean, it depends. You know, if somebody wants to do it, then you make sure it's someone who wants to do it, that really wants to look at it. I would think all those selectmen would be interested in looking at the budget and don't want to just shovel money at the schools, so I, you know? I'd be surprised if there isn't someone chomping at the bit to do that, so. Alright, we'll move forward. The CARES Act Round Two applications, now we'll dig into this further that we started talking about before the meeting. As I said, my comments were that we've adjusted the tent number up where it needs to be. And you need to make sure that that price, that tent has sides, so it can be enclosed, so it could hold heat. And we do need to look into the price of a heater, because the idea would be if we did special town, we could do that outside with that and keep people warm and space them. And then we begin to talk about the end of this, Jessica, if you'll go into it for us, about the laptops and Chromebooks for middle-aged students.
Yes, so a couple of weeks ago, the school approached me, and they're approaching every select board where they have, for the elementary school students, to ask if the town would be willing to share some of the CARES Act funding with those elementary schools to provide the educators and students with hardware for remote learning. Currently, students don't have any hardware, it's, or the, the hardware that they have is very, um... I don't know how I want to describe it, but basically they're using like makeshift desktops and it's just, there's really no consistency across hardware that's being used by students. And then lap, educators also don't have access to school laptops, they have to use their personal computers. But as Greg mentioned earlier, a lot of the teachers are actually teaching from inside their classrooms, so they could still potentially be using school-owned hardware. So the, these are the numbers that they came up to us with, which is seventy thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for laptops for educators and...
And for how many educators is that for?
That is for fifty-seven educators, and that is twelve, uh, one thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars per laptop.
Fifty educators, so they must be doing teachers and assistants?
Yep, paraprofessional support staff.
Yeah, more than just the teachers for the...
Yep.
Right.
And then the Chromebooks are for four hundred and five students at three hundred and sixty-seven dollars per Chromebook.
Well, first of all, I'd say I think both those electronic numbers seem high to me. I've never spent any place remotely close to twelve hundred dollars for a laptop for myself. We're also not saying we're gonna buy the best out there because it has to last in ten years. In all likelihood, this is a six-month to less than a year anyways need for this to be, so we don't need to buy the biggest, baddest, best, fastest. And I would think we could do far better than twelve hundred dollars for a laptop that would suit the purpose here. Chromebooks at three fifty, that's higher than I'm used to seeing, but I think it's probably an effective, you know, supply and demand, you know? Everyone's doing this with the schools. And I'm not too surprised that number's up where it is, but I think the twelve hundred for the laptops is, is excessive. I would sure, if we looked, we could find it lesser. Secondly, of the fifty-some-odd educators, I would expect that at least, at least half are in the school full-time. So we should, we should cut that number in half. As I said, it's, it's nice to be able to help the school with this. The school did have their CARES Act money, and this was CARES Act money for the town. And it totals about forty percent of our CARES Act money. But as we tossed out with Dr. Muir, if we're not using it, we don't wanna, you know, when there's a need, we, we should kick in. So I'm not objectionable to using it. I'm glad we could do something, I just don't want to overspend, because we're already at a deficit right here, so we can't spend everything on our list, so we need to cut back. And I think, looking at how many teachers are working at home versus in school, that will bring back that number significantly, same thing with students. You know, if there's two hundred students going to school, that's seventy-four thousand dollars we save on Chromebooks. And I think that's significant. That will get us into our check, our balance here and allow us money for a heater to be added to the tent. So the tent's actually useful in the fall meeting outside, because without heat, that tent will not be useful. That's my thoughts. Dylan?
Uh, yeah, I, that's a pretty big price tag. I have to take a look at this a little longer before I have any more comments, but I have to start about the, I got some sticker shop, sure.
See a deadline to get this application in?
We do not have another meeting scheduled currently, Dylan, prior to then, so I'm not sure if...
It's a short list.
But I'm only bringing it up because of the timelines. One thing I'm looking at is...
I'm looking at other things too, I just want to talk about the laptops.
Just speaking of the two school line items, I was thinking, similar to Greg, for the laptops, if we cut it in half approximately, so I'm saying, cut thirty-five thousand out of it. That leaves thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four to assist and supplement the existing computers they already have. So now, again, like Greg's saying, if half are working from the school and half are working from home, we're able to give them laptops to work from home.
Right. And I don't know, maybe...
And Chromebooks, I was suggesting cut sixty-five thousand, but leave eighty-three thousand approximately.
Yeah. Yeah, it could be that they say that there's one day they clean the school, so everyone's remote learning, and I don't know, but...
I know that was part of the plan.
But, you know, to, to fork out Chromebooks for remote learning, they have the remote, they can send assignments home for that day as opposed to remote learn. You know, that's a lot of money to spend for one day at home for the, for the kids when they're basically full-time. And I, I still believe this will go away soon. I've, I've seen, I almost printed out today, there's a, another group of doctors meeting about the COVID that have made recommendations that everything go back to normal, that where the numbers are and the things that I've been thinking and saying for months, but that will play out eventually. But I don't believe this will stay around through the whole school year.
I think we'll have a much better idea that in the next month and a half.
Yes.
To find out if that makes way, truly does roll into the way they're predicting.
Well, and the problem is, if, if the article that I looked at, there was a society of doctors that looked and they made the recommendations, and it has signatures of well over a hundred doctors and, and that have signed this, that recommend, we drop the masks, we go back to business as usual, go back to dining, go back to school, go back to normal. This is something that affects like ninety-five percent people over seventy-five, something outrageously high in that age group. And those, that age group, we need to be careful with, have extra precautions, protection with, like I've said right along. Not make our children protect the elderly, you know, let the kids go to school, get the learning. But even if all that comes out publicly and they say, okay, we're wrong, this is the right way to do it, it's not gonna hurt your kids. There's been generated such fear in society about this, that it's still gonna take time before people are comfortable to go back to school with their kids. So because of that, I do acknowledge that this remote learning is, is gonna go on for probably most of the school year. I'd rather it doesn't, but I can see that it may go past half a school year, because people are just gonna be apprehensive. They're so accustomed to the mask, it makes them feel safe. So even when this does end and they, you know, say, okay, everything, everything's safe. Now, even if it's not the way I say, that we just acknowledge, you know, my point, okay, it's never affected the very young, it's minimal to the mid-range. There are some, and people die from the regular flu too, of all age groups, and it's really, you know, seventy-five and up is a high risk. To that end, go back to life as usual, people that are high-risk, take care of yourself. If it's not that, if they say, it is as bad as we thought, but we've gotten past it, it's gone, the virus is gone. Even with that said, there's gonna be people that are apprehensive and fearful. Even with that said, there's gonna be, be people that are apprehensive and fearful. So no matter how it ends, there's gonna be people that are gonna be very apprehensive to go back, back in public, to go out without a mask and to do things and participate when that, the kids go to school and stuff. So the, the effects of this, no matter what the outcome, no matter how it ends, they could decide, oh my gosh, this whole thing was a stupid hoax, it really is nothing. It still wouldn't stop people from saying, oh, I've had the mask on for almost a year now, this is serious. We gotta make some allowances, but yeah, I, I don't want to pay a hundred and fifty thousand. I want to make sure we have enough money to get a heater. And outside of that, this is our last round of, of, of use of the money anyway, so I don't mind using up what we, what we have left towards the school to whatever end that is. It doesn't, you know.
And it's still all, from my understanding, if anybody asks, it still all has to be spent before the end of the year.
Yeah.
So.
So there's no reason to.
That's why the application timeline is important, because it also adds up to purchasing.
So I would say as far as this goes, instead of cutting a certain amount, let's see what it's gonna cost us to get a heater for the tent. Make sure, once we add the heater in, that we cut enough for the heater and to make that bottom line come out even instead of in, in the red. And, um, and that, then we'll get as much as we can for the school, which is still, we don't have to give them anything. We want to give them whatever we can, and they can fill in the gap for the difference of the rest of, of their budget, but.
So I do, I do want to build in a buffer, um, I don't want to spend up to the last dollar just because, um, you know, what we saw from between our first app, um, round of application and here is that we've had to spend on things that we didn't predict, I mean, that's the whole point of the CARES Act. So there is some things built into this, um, CARES Act round two funding that we had purchased that we needed, um, and that we're going back for basically reimbursement at this point. And so what's gonna happen at the end of the year, and they said early December, they're gonna open up like a third round of CARES Act, but it's gonna be reimbursement based, not, um, new, not an application for anything new, it's just gonna be all reimbursement based. So I do want to build in, I don't want to spend up to four ninety-three, um, if we can build in some, you know, even a couple thousand, ten thousand dollars off the offer.
Yeah.
Just to be safe.
Yeah.
We can round it, yeah, you just take, I think ten thousand buffer's probably fine, but I did have some other questions here, you know. Message board, that's an electronic message boards?
Correct.
Okay. Now, here's what I don't like, police department uniforms, fifty thousand dollars. How is that a COVID?
So, um.
Just curious.
We reached out to the state, I reached out to the state to see if our uniforms would be an eligible expense, and the state said yes, um, you know, our reasoning is that, and, you know, our officers don't have a large number of uniforms as it is.
Usually two cents, I think.
I think, I, you know, I think Chief Frigowski might be able to comment on that, but in the event that they are exposed to COVID during the shift or, um.
They need the ability to change and then get those washed.
Right, we want to make sure that they have a full complete uniform that they're able to change into, or, you, you know, in the event that they, they are having their uh, uniforms cleaned more often during this time to try and.
Along that lines. Does the police department have washer dryer ability to clean in the station, do people have to take these back? Like the fire department didn't.
Right.
We have a, had a commercial one for the gear, which is a different type of wash system for the gear, and it's hung dry, it's not dried.
Right.
Um, they went out and got a washer dryer and set it up in the new public safety building, so that people on duty could take and wash this stuff while on duty and not have to take it home. Do they have that set up, or is that something that should be considered in here as well? Because washer and dryers are relatively inexpensive in this.
Right.
But they gotta have the ability to, to clean those uniforms on, at work, not, you know, put on the clean uniform, put that in the washer and go back to work, not have to bundle up and take it home.
Is it more, more cost efficient to get washer dryer versus?
Well, they're still gonna need more uniforms, because if, if they get someone with COVID and they cough and sneeze and they're covered, they really needed to get that uniform off. So you need to have.
Right, but if they have to.
And then it happens again, I mean, when, when.
Didn't you say?
Well, well.
I'm sorry, it was a certain point.
Well, well, but it depends.
You've come through too many uniforms today, so.
But no, when you, when you go in.
Put on the tiebacks, go back to work.
The, the police go to most, a lot of the ambulance calls the police go to. And when you go to those calls, you do come across patients.
I follow.
You, you, if you listen to the scanner, you, how, how they answer the questions, the yes to the questions, okay, yes, they have COVID symptoms, that's yes to the questions. You'll hear that a lot, sometimes you hear no, still doesn't mean it's really no, just means they answered no. But they have that same exposure as well, and if you find out someone's positive, if they have got coughed on, sneezed on, bled on, especially in the process of COVID, it's just because of that.
Their.
You know.
Their uniforms are dry people.
Ah, lovely, so that's not suddenly gonna set up.
Right.
Whoa.
Cause that was my question.
So more reason to have more uniforms on there, so, okay, so no washer dryer, but, um, uniforms make even more sense.
And Chief Frigowski is, um, I don't know if he'll bring anything additional?
Any more input, John, or? Chief?
So a couple of things that happened here, we, our guys didn't have a lot of uniforms to begin, or this gives us a chance to get them the extra uniforms, so that there's no downtime. We've also experienced a problem with manufacturing during the COVID, so we haven't been able to get uniforms. So this helps us to restock and keep, uh, in supply enough uniforms for worst-case scenario. And then we have to look at all of the uniforms we have, so we better buy extras of everything, which is why you see that it's such a large number, but it gives us the chance to get ahead of the, of curve. We were way behind in the COVID hit, and then they shut down the factories and it just made it worse.
Is it, are these uniforms intended to be assigned to each person, or are you buying uniforms to kind of put on the shelf so that no matter who fits that size, when they need it, there's a uniform there?
So it's a little bit of both, you're gonna issue, uh, two pants, two shirts to each officer from the regular, uh, duty gear, and a pair of boots, because we can't keep boots in, uh, basically, we can't get generic sizes for boots, so we'll issue the boots and a duty belt, because if they get exposed, they have to drop the whole belt, so we'll give them the belt. And then virtually everything else, we're just getting, uh, basic sizes, so that we can put them in our quartermaster closet and have them, uh, more in, uh, general if officers get exposed. So a little bit of both.
Is there any way for the, the belts, can they be sanitized?
They can be, but if a guy gets exposed, he's gotta drop the belt and we have to send it out to get it sanitized, so we've gotta give him another belt to put on.
Oh, so it can't be sanitized on-site, it's not something you guys can clean, you're saying you have to send it somewhere?
I think it's like, either fire department gear, I don't know if we want to take that chance with this stuff. Like we just wanna, uh, drop it, and even if we end up cleaning it on-site, which I don't know that we would, um, it's not gonna be instantaneous.
Okay. I've gotta pick that apart a little bit on you, chief. What's contained in the belt?
The belts, you have a, a source for, um, magazines, holster, um, pepper spray holder, radio holder, two handcuff holders, uh, and a flashlight holder.
So when, when they're exposed, we have a flashlight, handcuffs, a firearm, a taser in clips are all also exposed at the same time, are those put right back in service, or they taken out of service?
Well, you're actually right about that, and we probably should add flashlights to our list, have a couple of extra, thank you for mentioning that, uh, we should, we did add handcuffs. Um, and then as far as handcuffs go, there's nothing we can do about that, we have what we have, so, and we have two extra.
So those are gonna need to be, those, so you need to set up some kind of, you're gonna need to have some sort of sterilization for the, for the firearms and tasers anyways, to make sure that.
The, the hard surfaces aren't nearly as hard to wipe down with this.
As the, right, but I'm just saying.
But I do understand, especially.
This more thing I'm saying is that, once you drop the belt, you say drop the belt, but you can't just drop everything, you've gotta take certain things back out of it. Um, and they can be cleaned to a point because they're hard, but, you know, handcuffs, they're intricate, and if you put them on other people.
That's a good point, we'll, we'll look at the flashlights, that, that's a good point.
Well, I want to say that we have a little bit down, um, the line, you do have UV sanitation ones that are, um, included here. So that, basically what you do is you hover it over a surface and the UV light kills COVID, just like in those air purifiers. So that's also an option to use over like the handgun.
So that'd be really good for the solid surfaces, flashlights, handguns, handcuffs, so that may cover those things.
Yep.
Okay, good, so. All right. Anything else you guys want to look at under this list?
The, could you better clarify the library department line item that says staffing needs?
Yes, so each, um, so in order for Carol to open up the library, um, again, to provide more services to the public, um, she's going to need extra, uh, staffing capacity to make sure that people are obeying social distancing rules, and make sure that, you know, things are getting wiped down appropriately and that, um, people can receive service. You know, as, instead of having maybe like a line of people trying to wait for service, you know, uh, extra staff capacity allows for, um, fewer people to be waiting in a line or what have you.
Thank you.
Power load stretcher, forty-three grand, holy smoke.
So that's something that's been on the.
Oh, I know what it is, and it's worth, I mean.
And, uh, Chief Frigowski, you know, he's expressed that if we have the power load stretcher, it'll make both ambulances compatible with each other, because the new ambulance will have a power load stretcher, so an additional one would, um, you know, in the event that one needed to be cleaned or, or what have you, you know, they can switch out the equipment between the two ambulances.
You know, I say, if there's a fire and there's someone trapped in a building, it's always someone that weighs four hundred pounds on the third floor in the middle of the night. It's, it's, it's an exaggeration of everything, but it's, it's, a lot of times people who, um, have medical issues, a lot of the medications they're on cause water retention and swelling. So they do unnaturally get, get lodged with water, they, they gain a lot of weight, uh, because the meds are on, it becomes difficult for them to be mobile. And often, uh, moving is very difficult, so having a power stretcher is, you know, very, very beneficial, the, the, a lot of times.
Is the power stretcher more of like a hydraulic, bringing it up and down for elevation control, or is it actually like motorized, helps you get upstairs?
I, I don't think upstairs, but I think this actually was motorized for terrain, I'm not positive, I believe it's motorized in the terrain, but hydraulics, yes.
Right, so, yeah, so, in relation to COVID, um, specifically, this allows, um, two members, two EMTs to use versus if you weren't to need to, um, lift.
That's where I was, that's where I was going.
Six people that would need it.
It's, it's.
Reduce the manpower necessary to do what you need to do.
It's happened less often lately, but in years past, we would get toned out for lift assist, and you'd have, you're up to six people trying to lift somebody up, get them a stretcher, guide the stretcher down, and still, just to get them out. Very often, the people that are, that are much larger than the stretcher, and you can't let someone roll off or fall to the ground, and it, you know, it's difficult to move, it's difficult to maneuver, to lift into the, um, ambulance. Um, typically, you'd, you know, hold, count together, and when you take a stretcher out, you lift up and squeeze the button and drop the tracks down, but then put them in, you lift up the back end and hook it on the ambulance, and then you squeeze the handles and someone raises a feet, and then someone, or four people, hold the other end and lift it up and roll it in, that's negated with the, with the power stretches.
Okay.
So yeah, it's very labor-intensive and you expose a lot more people, um, without it.
So I did want to, I did want to mention that, um, FEMA, there is a component of having, having a FEMA reimbursement, and so initially, based off of the guidance that we received, there were a lot more items on this list that would have been covered by FEMA. Um, but when I had Chief Frigowski reach out to our FEMA regional representative, we got some feedback that what we originally thought would be covered seventy-five percent through FEMA is not eligible for FEMA at all. Um, so that includes the power load stretcher, the pulse oximeters, the message board, um, and even the traffic cone, which was a very strange one. Those things are not gonna be covered by FEMA, which is why the, uh, line item at the end is so much, so much over than what we have to expend, uh, that was not the intention when I put this together.
It looks like they'll fund safety vests and the staffing at the, at the school.
Right now, that's all I have, um, that'll be.
Good question.
Yep.
Electronic clickers for town meeting.
Correct.
What's that about?
So that's a system that, uh, Rutland used their CARES Act funds for, and Ellen's really interested in. Um, and it allows people, instead of using the paper, um, tags to make a vote, it allows people to electronically put in their votes for each item.
So every, every vote becomes a secret ballot?
Actually.
As much as we trust.
I guess means more likely you're gonna get everybody's individual honest vote without the deal of fear pressure.
Right, as long as they are, I'm sure they're legal, they wouldn't be looking for them. I always worry what they say, you can and can't do with elections and that, that's, that's a, that'd save us a lot of time for secret ballots and hand-counting things and all the things, I was kind of close, we're gonna do a hand count. Think how many times they stand up and we could, you know, count everybody individually, tablet it, and go back and do it again. Um, one year, we probably spent close to an hour doing individual co, votes and counts and, um, we've had some long meetings.
So, yeah, so this would help expedite situations like that, or, um, you know, in the event that they would have to do, uh, you know, it just reduces the amount of time that people are in a, in a confined space potentially.
Excellent. Okay, so what we have so far is basically, we're gonna, um, add in heater for that tent. Um, make sure you're reasonable, leave yourself a buffer of seven to ten thousand dollars, and then reduce the school purchases, um, down to a number that, that fits. I'm sure they'll understand, I'm sure they'll be grateful for whatever we, we can offer, if we're still giving them a hundred and seventy, a hundred and sixty thousand dollars with the back says things. That's a third of the money we get from the town for cares, and it's, it's a good place to go to the kids.
I mean, I generally like, uh, the request, the recommendation on this, I think it's, it's all justified.
Yep. And as other books, we asked.
Like everything, you wish you had more money, because.
We asked Dr. Muir what we could do to help, and she's, I think it's put a reasonable request to, and even if we get most of it for her, she may say, okay, yeah, we really don't need all of them, these, these people have their computer, or these kids have Chromebooks of their own, and not everybody's gonna say, you know, like a lot of towns, you don't just give every kid a Chromebook, you come and get one if you need one. And you hope people say, nope, we have our own, we don't need it. Bearing in mind, you'll be returning these later, so if you don't need it, why are you gonna give your six-year-old a Chromebook if they don't need it and risk breaking it, and, you know. So if the caveat is they return these, in the end, when they're done, um, maybe people will simply come if they need them, and the requirement would be far less than four hundred, you know, hopefully you'll need two anyways, and that number would be less. Then if they have excess, well, the school system can use them as they use them. Cause I'm sure other towns might not have the funding to put any for the kids, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if it has to be designated just our students or not, but hopefully it could go there. All right, uh, let's move on. COVID update.
Oh, did this need any formal action?
Oh, do we need to vote and sign it?
So, there is a signature that's gonna be needed from you specifically, uh, um, it's similar to the form that was filled out last time that you signed, that basically makes the formal request to state on how much this does.
So we could take a motion to approve this list once we make the modifications to it, and I could sign it when that's, when the heat is on, and she has her, her seven to ten thousand dollar buffer, and then adjust the school accordingly. I just reduced the books and laptops, you know. Appropriately with the same, same percentage. Treat it as a total figure, break it down and then split it up, it's, it's about two to one, two tend to. I'm not gonna talk without looking again, that's bad.
Seventy-three thousand.
Yeah, it's almost a two, it's almost a two.
Is what we need to make it break even. And you were saying you'd like to keep at least ten thousand for the reimbursement potential as unexpected. So that means we've gotta try to clear out eighty-three thousand. And so I had recommended taking about a hundred thousand from the school stuff, which was the thirty-five thousand for the laptops and sixty-five thousand for Chromebooks. We could put anywhere from, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand back in. Put anywhere from, you know, fifteen to twenty thousand back into Chromebooks if we wanted and still. That would be about a hundred thousand dollars we can offer for Chromebooks versus thirty-five thousand for laptops.
We don't know what we're going to have for heater number yet though, that's all.
Right, without the heater number, so.
Let's, let's, let's let her do that and she can email us all the number if we're okay with it, we'll go ahead and I'll sign it. We can do that via email, we can approve, approve it.
All I'm suggesting is if the rest of the board members are okay with it, if all we're talking about is potentially adjusting three numbers, the two school numbers and a heater number that's not known to date.
And, and leaving a buffer.
And leaving the buffer. I'm okay with Greg making that kind of final approval acceptance and signing so that the application process doesn't have to wait for another board selectman meeting. What are your thoughts on that, Dylan?
Yeah, I think that that's fine. I think that's totally fine.
Then I'll make a motion that we allow Greg to sign the CARES Act application number two with the understanding that the two school department line items can be adjusted as currently presented. We add a heating of the tent as another line, line item with the total result leaving a ten thousand dollar balance of CARES Act funding for our cushion as requested by the town administrator.
Now, before we move in that, well, we have a motion to second, correct?
That's the motion, so.
We have a se-. Okay, I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? And at that point, I will say, um, if we don't include money, that ten thousand to be spent somewhere, can we, we're going to lose it. We, don't we have to have it on this list to use it?
No, so come December, we'll receive, um, a notification that we can start putting in for reimbursement. So if there's something between now and December thirty-first that comes up that's not on this list, that's spontaneous, we, um, you know, if a fire department needs more staffing or if there's something else that comes up that we weren't, that we couldn't include in this list that we can't predict right now, that reimbursement will come in December, which is when, when I'll use that ten thousand dollar buffer to recoup those costs.
So they have a plan to reimburse us for unused funds that they.
At the end, yep.
Okay, good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Irvin, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And O'Sullivan, yes. Now Jessica, that brings us up to your COVID update.
All right, COVID update. So in the past two weeks, the town has seen four positive cases. We are still, um, un, uncolored community, which means we have very, very little risk of, um, you know, high spread or high contagiousness. And, um, so we're still in a good place. We're still planning on having Barry scary in a couple of weeks on Halloween. Um, as I know that there's going to be some other Halloween related activities that will begin from boarding Allen. So I think everybody's really looking forward to that. And I, you know, something else that we want to discuss now is the potential of opening our board meetings back up to the public. I don't feel comfortable necessarily expanding what we have within the municipal building right now where we have people coming by appointment. But because we have, I have seen some very small municipalities have their staff exposed to COVID. Wes Boylston is a recent one and also the town of Handen. Both, which, uh, I know Handen for sure is smaller than Barry. I'm not sure about Wes Boylston, but I think it's smaller than Barry. Um, so I really don't want to risk exposing our staff unnecessarily. Um, if we just open it up back to the public, but I do think Barry's interest for having the public back in the board meetings.
I've heard that.
At this time, what I would, I would take an interim step. As far as I'm concerned, I'd open it all back up, but I think what might be most prudent. I tell you what my opinion is what I want to do, but I, I do try to abide by the rules and do what people seem to want done. I would think that if we're going to have people on our agenda, we begin by inviting agenda item people in here to present in person. For, you know, for example, like for Barry scary Halloween or if someone wants to use the car, then they can come and present in person for now. And maybe, maybe, um, in December meetings, we'll think about opening up to the general public. But if a building's not open to the public, I don't want to open the meetings to the public because it's still bringing everybody in here. That being said, we've prepared, we have the UV air filtration, we have those around the building, we have them all around town right now. We're making things as proactively safe as we can. And I think we'll get to it, I hope, I hope sooner, but I, I would recommend we don't do that in advance of the building.
I would agree and I do kind of like the concept of let's kind of like ease into it. Part of it is kind of, let's see what the next six to eight weeks show as to, is there truly a second wave coming? Or is the second wave more about, at least at the time it was described, the potential? And you, you always want to prepare for the worst and then hope for the best. If we're lucky, it's the best and we prepared for the worst and come November, we see that the numbers are still just doing what they always do in Barry, tripled. Now, over the entire summer, nothing. But the minute we started bringing back group activities, school, other things like that, we started to get. Again, it's not a lot, but one in five thousand is not far from the state's red alert system when it's eight in a hundred thousand. You actually already exceeded it. Do your math, takes half a body to get into the eight for one hundred thousand people and to, to reach that level of COVID. So we're at a fine line, but because of the way it's happening, it's not spiking. Technically, I think if we had two or three cases that weren't all in the same household, they would view us completely different and say we're in the red, just because our population's only five thousand. And it would be a paperwork decision, but that's what would come down on us. And that's just how the state's defining it now. So in my mind, I like the idea, let's work our way into it. If you are okay with it, I'm more than willing to say at the next meeting, we can invite only those people that are presenting to the board. This is not an invitation for public comment. Public comment will still be done remotely, but if you have an agenda item to present to the board, I'm.
It'll be participation by invitation. We'll invite those people that we welcome into presenting, so they don't choose. We will, it'll probably be invitation. And I'll just throw something out there which people don't think of. As a testing, they found more and more numbers in Massachusetts week by week that coincided with opening up more and more test facilities. So it's, it's, yes, it's new cases because it new test, newly tested, but it's not necessarily new cases. It's people that wouldn't have bothered to get tested at the new facility to open. And I would dare say if you tested every resident of Barry for COVID or for COVID antibodies, you may find twenty or thirty percent of the town had it at some point. It's, I still believe when I was here.
Can't deny that.
Back in like January where I said, jeez, I've had this cough for five weeks, I can't get rid of it. I've been struggling to breathe, it's all the things that would, would make this COVID. That was back in, in January before the big outbreak, but, you know, there's probably a lot of people that may have had it, a lot of people that, hey, symptomatic and never knew they had it. But, um, you know, if we had a testing facility free to the public here in Barry, we probably would have had more cases and people would go, oh, just, let's go see for fun. Oh, look, I'm positive, you know, these football players are all testing positive. It's not because they're in the deathbed, they can't move, they're sick. It's a mandatory test before practice, whoop, go home. Why? You got COVID. I do? And, and it's, you know, more often than not right now, people are getting more test results and a positive, but most of these people, I believe, are coming in just to get a test for whatever purpose, for their job, for their vacation, for their whatever. That's how they're finding out they have it, not because they're going to the doctor. Like in the beginning, you call your doctor, I feel, I feel awful. They ask the questions, you answer yes, they say, stay home. Which while now we know is not a good idea, but anyways. Moving on from that, you done with COVID, do we have any?
I have one more COVID thing I'd like to bring up. It's come up for a variety of reasons, but I would like to propose that we make an attempt to get all of our boards and commissions that are meeting right now to meet in this room. It's got more space, it's got the air cleaning, it's got the cameras. It's much more conducive to public participation. So that would mean.
We have been saying.
Planning Board, Conservation Commission, DPW Commission.
We have been saying.
I'm sure there are others like the Finance Committee, et cetera. The one thing in. Technically, and maybe not the DPW Commission, because the barn technically I think falls under the DPW Commission. But when it comes to all the other ones, they're all using property under the Select Boards Administration. And we can tell them this is the only room you can use to meet unless you want to meet off of municipal property. Because we can't tell them they have to meet in a municipal building.
Correct.
But.
This will be the only room we make available?
I'm just suggesting that this appears to be the best place that we've been able to prepare for meetings in this current environment.
And as far as the, the regulation that states that if they're not open to the public, they have to be recorded, that can be obtained here. Yeah, we've been saying right along, they should use it, we've been asking they use it, we've been suggesting they use it, but we can't tell them they have to. But I agree, I would love to hear a motion that the only room that will allow committees to use in this building is this one for meetings. I would love to hear that motion.
I would make a motion that as of. I've got to do my math.
Just say November.
If a meeting has already been scheduled.
Just say November second.
And a location, we've got to give them a minimum of forty-eight hours to revise it. So today is what day?
Nineteenth.
The nineteenth. So I would say as of any meeting to occur on the twenty-second or after.
Yes.
Shall be held in the Board's Selectment Meeting Room in Henry Woods Building.
If it's to be in town property.
For all meetings held on town property.
Under control at this point. I'll second that. Have a motion to second that as of the twenty-second, any meetings and committees by town bodies shall be held in this Select Board Meeting Room if the meeting is to be held on property under our jurisdiction. Any further conversation on that? Hearing none, I'll call for vote, all those in favor?
Matt Irvin, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
And Greg O'Sullivan, yes. Good idea, that's a way to get in here. We've been asking and no one's doing it, that'll, that'll get him here, I hope.
I would, this is just a little further conversation. I know that some boards or committees in, um, especially like Conservation, Planning Board, they don't really have a town administrator, town administrator assistant combination supporting their meetings. They have one administrative assistant. Their job really is to record the meeting minutes and stay on top of it, follow up on directors from the board to try to get more info with town council if they're not there. Kind of, it's really hard to ask them also be to someone, be someone to run a Zoom meeting. So for all of the boards and commissions that would like to use Zoom versus just doing a recorded meeting, because by the law, they don't have to use Zoom.
No.
They just have to record it, make sure people can see what was participated in the meeting.
But it may be easier to use Zoom than arrange to have it recorded.
We just, I just want to make sure that we do what we can to provide those other boards, commissions and meetings someone that can support that, whether we have people that are willing to volunteer, whether we need to work with CMR PC to see if they can continue to provide some support when possible, or if we have other employees that have the capacity and if giving them an extra couple hours a week to run a Zoom meeting is something we can afford in the budget, then we just try to do our best to make it happen.
Right.
And it's again, this person is just running a meeting, it's, I open it and I'm just managing Zoom. I have nothing to do with the discussion or the agenda or the topic.
And it may, it may be enough to have Jessica set up or Sandy set up the Zoom for them so the webinar is set, they have, so all they have to do is actually run it. Some people may be comfortable if it's all established for them too, so. Whatever level of participation they need, if we can try to work with it, that'd be fantastic. Not expecting you to do these in all your, any nights you do have off and pick them up, but.
Right, just trying to find the best we can.
You can certainly advertise it for them and get it out there and do that side during the business week.
And that could also be a Facebook thing is calling volunteers that are willing to help support remote Zoom meetings. They can send in an application or an email saying, yeah, I could help you out once or twice a month or something.
Otherwise, we got to get in touch and try to get them recorded this way and, and, you know. But at least they're going to be held in a room if it's.
In the meantime, we'll also have to work with VCTV to find out what's possible and what support he might need.
Yeah, I can definitely talk to him.
Yeah, it might be easier to just say, hey, can we give you a list of time and dates and you turn them on and off? They, they may just do that easily. So just look into both and we have a couple of days, they come to the room and it's up to them to record their own meetings for now, but if we can get a webinar out there, great.
So there we go. We gave you four days to answer all those questions, thank you.
Good luck.
Hey, Rich is really good at getting back to me, so.
Keep you on your toes, so while we're still here, other topic, I do want to read this, um, the letter we have for the town of Douglas, I hope you both get to read it at this point. But the dear colleagues without qualified immunity, the financial exposure to your city or town is simply untenable. We urge you to have your town board view on. Town board view on the matter to the MMA directly, so pass it on maybe, but. So the qualified immunity basically is a, is a, a safety for first responders and specific in this case, police officers in performing their duty as long, as long as they are performing within the guidelines of their job and being, you know, within the rules set forth and procedures, they are protected from lawsuits and being sued. This doesn't cover, say, an officer who if someone decided to just go punch someone in the face and beat him up, they're not protected, they're on their own for that. If they do something egregious, a firearm issue, these aren't protected. But, you know, you're making a stop, you, you know, someone's combatant, you have to get them out of the car. They're protected doing their duties and they're, and they're protected from frivolous lawsuits. And the way that MMA, oh my gosh. The MMA, thank you, is, is supporting the bill that's written. It strips sack qualified immunity from police officers. This is a part of the extended Black Lives Matter usement, defund police and all that sort of stuff. And this is, you know, my opinion, sort of leaning left with this and trying to take things away from the police department and the police officers. So I am in agreement with the town of Douglas that we should let MMA that we know that we're not happy with this, with this path. I think the qualified immunity for, you know, for first responders is important. Yeah, it's.
I'd have to look at the actual language, um, because a lot of times when you, you hear something and you're not actually reading to yourself, you're only getting that one person's interpretation of what it means. I am definitely not in support of removing the complete concept of qualified immunity. What I do believe though is we, we should be mandating a greater transparency of investigations when someone does raise a concern that excessive force or reckless endangerment, things like that occur from a public safety individual while on the job. More often than not, it gets negotiated out through various reasons, whether personnel, policy, union contracts. It all becomes executive session and nobody gets to hear about it. And the truth is. That hurts the police force more than it helps. If someone actually did something wrong, first of all, live it, learn it, and I'll forgive you for it. I won't forget it, but I'll forgive you. If you repeat it, I'm not as likely to forgive you. But I wouldn't know if you repeated it, if you're not telling me what's going on. And so to me, in order to get to the point of, yeah, he made a mistake. He got the slap on the wrist, if that's what it warranted.
Right.
Fine, just tell the public that's what happened. Fine, just tell the public that's what happened. And you move forward, but if he's got a history of ten slaps on the wrist, it looks bad on the department. And that happens a lot sometimes, especially in larger departments, say like Worcester Police, because you got, I don't know, probably a hundred officers or more.
Probably more.
You know. You're going to get more of those people that kind of, it's a slap on the wrist because whatever came up that day just was not that significant. And the person that was talking about it couldn't provide enough evidence to support the he said, she said conversation that comes out of that initial report. There's just too much.
So the bill to look at.
Our towns aren't likely to have that type of, nobody knows what's going on because it's a smaller town.
Right, but it's, it's still in general, the, the issue is supposedly it takes away the protection. So the bill is H forty-eight sixty. And it was distributed on July twenty-second of, of this year. So if you want to research it and read it. H forty-eight sixty is the actual bill.
So a couple of weeks ago, I did see through some of the lists that I'm on. The MMA actually responded to the Town of Douglas's letter. So I can read just a snippet of that letter that kind of explains what their position on it is if you're interested.
Sure.
That would be great.
Okay, so Jeff Beckwith, who's the president of MMA, says, I want to take this opportunity to underscore that the MMA opposes any change in qualified immunity due to the liability exposure and costs for the town, cities and local taxpayers. Instead, the MMA has called on the House and Senate to strike this language from their bills. We believe that many involved in the debate are unaware of the real world impact of this language, especially in the overbroad Senate provision, which would impact all of government. A legislative study with municipal representation is necessary to achieve a common understanding of the implications. MMA will not support language to weaken qualified immunity in a final bill. MMA does support the certification in training provisions in the pending bills, recognizing that decertification of officers who fail to meet appropriate standards will be an important accountability and performance tool moving forward. However, our communications to lawmakers have said that certification alone will not lead to meaningful progress unless towns and cities are granted greater management rights in collective bargaining. The civil service system is reformed with provisions allowing communities, the local option to depart the system and create their own recruitment, promotion and disciplinary procedures, and the scope of the Joint Labor Management Committee is narrowed so that unelected arbitrators cannot weaken local management and disciplinary systems.
Okay, excellent. So they are not actually supporting the change.
We're a bit more consistent with what I was hoping it would end up being.
Good.
Something more about.
So to that end.
They do wrong, you can actually cull them on it, but we're not looking at full lawsuits where, yeah, okay.
Right, and they're not supporting a change and taking them away with qualified. So there's no letter acquired there. I'm glad Douglas wrote and got a response and we have that answer without getting into it. Any, or else have any other discussions or things before we move forward? We'll do reports later if we want. I jumped that out of order, that's all I should, I'm going to back into the minutes. I didn't notice it down there, that's why I stuck it in more four minutes. Got to get without reading that all the way through. Minutes from Monday, September twenty-first. And minutes from October fifth. I've reviewed these and I'm happy with them. Dylan, have you reviewed both? And Matt, have you reviewed the September?
Yeah, I have reviewed both. I found nothing, uh, nothing wrong with either.
The only thing I wanted to do, and I kind of have to go back to the video, I think, to look at it a little more clearly is when we were reviewing the goals. I had made a couple of suggestions to provide something a little bit more specific, not quite as generic or set certain deadlines on it. I would either want to put them into the minutes as a record of this was a thought of how the goal should be addressed, or. You can just resubmit the goal based on that input and identify your recommendation on how to fit in a couple of those items. Because I didn't really want to give you a specific date of you should do this by then, because I did want you to kind of look at it and say, what do you think you can do?
Okay.
And if you can do that, then I have no problem with this. I just wanted to get some of that stuff more on the record of some of the detailed discussion. And I don't think the minutes have to have them, so I'm not holding up the minutes if we kind of agree that we'll just follow it up as a, an old business and just.
Yeah. You ought to get at it if you want to say some of our goals, this is recommended that you do more specific things, just as part, you know, we don't need to get into everything. This needs to cover the basic of what we talked about. So, yeah, I mean, I, I feel like it does, but we're going to follow up, we're going to fine tune those, but I don't think. This doesn't have to be, this is the archive of everything that happened here. There is a video when people.
That's why I'm not going to hold up the minutes, but I just wanted to use this as part of that conversation, just to follow up.
Alright, that's what I'm saying. I think they're pretty, pretty clear. It gives people, that's, that's the nuts and bolts of what we accomplished that day.
It's a summary of the meeting, not.
Right, if the specifics, they can watch the videos because ours are all out there. Fortunately, people can always watch the whole thing and get every word of it. But this summarizes, I think, very well, which is, which is.
And I agree with that, so that's why it was more, but I just wanted to have a chance to talk to you guys rather than just.
Alright, so I'll look for motion on the Sep- twenty, September twenty-first minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes for Monday, September first, two thousand and twenty's Selectman Meeting.
I think it's the twenty-first?
Twenty-first, twenty twenty, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion for the meeting minutes of Monday, September twenty-first, twenty twenty.
Motion to second to approve the meetings from September twenty-first, twenty twenty. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Matt Urban, yes.
Dylan Clark, yes.
Greg O'Sullivan, yes. I'll make a motion to approve the meeting, meeting minutes for Monday, October fifth, twenty twenty.
I will second that motion.
Have a motion to second to approve the meeting minutes for Monday, October fifth. Any further discussion?
I would have.
I know, I just didn't know if you had any questions on it before we did it.
I had no.
That's, that's why I held it up today. Okay, hearing none, I'll call for vote. All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, you were second. Didn't he make the motion?
No, I did. You seconded.
I am so far behind in this conversation.
Then O'Sullivan's, then O'Sullivan's, yes.
Matt Urban abstains.
So no, that's why I paused. Just in case you had questions about the meeting before we moved on to the minutes, we, we can go over them. But we could do that anytime if you wanted to, it doesn't matter. Okay, so we already do the correspondence. Selectman reports, gentlemen, you have anything to bring up specifically? Now's the time to have your blog.
Thought I did, but I think it fell, yeah, it, it lined up with the, uh.
Yeah, the stuff, usually the stuff I want to talk about, we hit at some point, so. Dylan, anything you'd like to bring up, discuss?
Uh, I don't have anything new, but I would be curious if we have any, um, if. We could get a, an update on what happened at the DPW Commission meeting on Wednesday. I was unfortunately not able to attend. Just in case anyone at home is listening, there was a lot of interest in that topic, so I don't know if you want to give a, a quick overview of where, where things at?
Sure, we, um, we called the meeting. I think we read the minutes and adjourned in five minutes. I'm kidding. Do you want to do it, Matt?
I'll do it. I'll summarize it real quick. We did give time to the general public to speak about both roads. After we went back and forth, Loring Road was approved to be paved. The, the balance of the residents on. That participated agreed with the concept of paving. Most of the questions about both roads was about making sure we got drainage done correctly. DPW superintendent then ensured that drainage is being addressed properly for both. Rogan Road was not approved to be paved at this time. There were, we did open it to the rest of the DPW Commission to vote on that. There was input regarding kind of various items. Some people said that one of the DPW commissioners mentioned that the, uh, the dirt road is something that would be attractive to people moving to town. I had indicated that there wasn't a, a huge push in either direction from the people on the road. We had some that did want it paved, one or two, and then a couple that didn't. So I didn't get too lost in that, but my bigger picture was if I kind of consider the major development of Berry between South Berry Road and South Street. Loring is between that. So I thought that was more of your paved neighborhood area. Rogan heads west of South Street, kind of more into the away area, so. And the dirt road portion is further from South Street. It's down by the Walmanet Road End. So in my mind, I thought that was an acceptable area. We didn't have to pave. And I also understood the benefit because it's proximity to the school that it likely would become a high traffic area if it is paved compared to its normal traffic. And I didn't think the time it took to drive around the block was all that significant to get Loring it down to South and come back to the high school versus taking Rogan over. That was just my thoughts. There were a couple of different opinions in the meeting, so I'm not trying to.
The only other two.
Dis sway other safety questions.
The only other two were, Joe Rogowski and Ron Higgins. Both had concerns for the drainage and wanted to see the, um, the muddy conditions when it, when the frost thaws. They get some pretty deep mud in that other end of Rogan, and they wanted to see that addressed drainage-wise prior to being repaired. It was discussed that the reclamation would go foot deep. It would eliminate that issue. But they wanted to take more time to look into it. So I, I did in fair warning say I'm going to bring it back in front of the board in the spring because the approval is already there to go ahead and use the funds for it up through this fiscal year. And so I've asked that the board members that had reservations. Specify what those are so they can be addressed prior to the spring. So we created a window to fix the concerns and we'll look at another vote in the spring.
And there's your summary.
Thank you for the summary.
You are welcome.
Alright then, Administrator Report.
So I don't have much this week because last week I was in MCPPO training, so, um, I was preoccupied then, which I passed the first section of it. I have two more sections to go.
Congratulations, good.
Very, uh, procurement in Massachusetts is very interesting. There, there's a lot of processes with it, but, um, I'm excited to go forward, but the next two installments will be in late November. Through January, um, there's more of like a longer term class, so, um, stay tuned for that. The one issue that I did want to bring up to the Select Board's attention was heating issues in the Henry Woods Building. Right now in this room, it feels pretty comfortable, but the heat has not been working in the building. We've had problems with the IM Power Automation, which is the, the company that works on our thermostats and basically creates zones throughout the building where heat can be used. And I think it's been a good tool because, you know, we have somebody monitoring what's working and what's not working in the building and um, it's, you know, something that's above and beyond what I'm knowledgeable about how a, a building is heated. So I think that it's been a good investment to have him here for us, but he has noticed that, um, that there's a pump. That was attempting to run but tripping out its thermal overload, which in short means that needs to be replaced. Those, the manufacturers discontinued production of that model, of course, that happens all the time. So he's looking at a forty-three hundred dollar, forty-four hundred dollar. Price tag for him to install that, a new pump. But I just think that there's a, a greater issue than just what he's doing in the building. I think that there's issues with the boilers and the furnace. And looking at service records with RJ McDonald over the past couple of years, it's pretty apparent that we can't get past the fact that it's just, they're old, right? And so I think that heating has already been an issue and I'm not quite sure how to address this going forward without just telling the staff to, uh, plug the log.
Okay. Boilers in general are actually very simplistic. You have a, a reservoir of, of water. And you have, in our case downstairs, you have a, a burner, which is, it's got a pump motor and it's got a nozzle to spray in the fuel, which is burned, which heats up the, the water jacket. And then the circulator pumps, as you said, that's what pushes the water through the pipes throughout the building. In this case, the IT side of that, they've added controls at each furnace. So instead of a zone, this building might have been three or four.
Orange thing there?
Yes.
Valve actuator.
So, so where, where it's on a certain zone or a certain loop, individual radiators can be turned on and off via computer with those actuators. So we, it's individualized room by room control. So the thermostat in the room with the actuator goes to the computer and in theory, if this room was shut down all day and wasn't being used for three days, she could drop the heat to forty-five or fifty in here and let it sit. And not heat this room unnecessarily. I wouldn't recommend that, but in, in theory, you could do that. So the control side of it, if it's working well, I don't know what you found out the other day when it wasn't on, because the furnace, the boiler was hot. So I don't know why it wasn't calling for heat, but that would have been a computer side. As far as the boiler. If we start looking into cost to replace that boiler, it's going to be close to the six figures. It's going to get up there for a boiler that size. And I, I don't know if we're ready to look at that. What you say, shaking, not that much?
No, I mean, we're, it's, it's cold and I, I definitely don't want the staff to be uncomfortable while working. But as far as financially goes, it's just.
We can't.
We can't.
Alright, so. You know, we have the service company. If this circulator pump out, I would feel that would fall under the RJ's service. I don't know if we have to, but part of the problem here is the way I view the system. Is we have these actuators, the control panel in the room down here, and these thermostats, which belong to a company that's, that's taking care of that end of this. As far as the, the oil inlet, the burner, the reservoir of water and the circulator pumps and the physical pipes that get here. That should be under control of RJ. So I don't want to have, even if he did a little less expensive, I, I would no sooner let him come and put a circulator pump in than I'd want to have RJ go tinker with his electronic panel. And the.
There's, there's a balance, so depending on the type of pump you get. There are new pumps now, electrically commutated motors that will, through the controls, adjust their flow based on differential pressure. So you actually save energy because it doesn't turn the pump as much, and that's where sometimes the controls guy should be involved.
Yeah, but now I, that.
Because he's going to have the differential pressure.
Clearly, clearly the thermostats and the controls do talk to those pumps because they turn them on and off. The pumps don't call for heat until that actuation comes. So, yeah, there may be something like that and maybe they could confer. We could ask RJ's if there is an issue for one or the other. But. I get nervous when you have the one technician messing with the other technician's things, because, you know, they have it set up and established a certain way. He comes in, he puts in that pump, and maybe he tweaks or alters something else in the process too. You know, someone's got it a certain setting, someone does a different setting, one puts a different nozzle in. And, and this is the problem with having the two companies and, and that, that is a problem.
I definitely agree. They should not be working separately. They should know how to talk to each other when they're making decisions, no matter either side.
But I, but I.
It becomes an issue otherwise.
But like I said, I, I'd no sooner have the IT side of it, who does this for them as well. Going into the furnace side, it's what, what we have McDonald's for. Any more than I'd want RJ McDonald come on up and, and try to tinker with the thermostats and zones. And if we have a thermostat issue, it's, so, you know, I, I think their placement should be through RJ, but there should be a, a conference with the IT guys for the, for the other side. If that makes, I hope that makes sense to you, because I know you were not so thrilled with the furnace stuff when you started, but.
It's a little high level right now, but I know Travis said that he recognizes that he, you know, if we go out to other vendors. It's a little high level right now, but I know, um, Travis said that he recognizes that he, you know, if we go out to other vendors for, to get different prices, so he's not saying that like he's the only one that would be able to do this work, so I can definitely reach out to RJ and see what, uh, kind of price that they would give for us.
Yeah, and you can ask the kind of pump he, pump he's recommending and why.
Yeah.
And tell him, we, we have, tell him we have to price it out.
Yeah.
Because we're making you price it out, and, and ask him what kind of pump he plans to use so you can price apples to apples, which is always smart. Because you ask him, he's recommending this model, someone else does it for less, but they recommend that model, you need to get apples to apples when you get a price from people. Too far too often, people don't.
Yeah.
Because you get what you pay for, usually. But, um, other, otherwise, you know, automatic bleeders, we talked about some before, and I don't know how expensive they are, but, um, if it's within the budget money reasonable, I think those make a big difference. I've gone up multiple times in the past and bled some radiators upstairs because they're gathering water. This is just a bleeder valve, this looks like a, looks like an old...
Bleeder valves themselves are...
They're not automatic, that's, it takes an old, looks like a skate key, and you open it up...
Yeah, but even the automatic, you're talking about ten, twelve bucks for the automatic bleeder.
It should have been...
And then whoever's going to unscrew one and screw another on.
Right. And I, I, you can check with Bill, I, I think that's...
It might be fifty now.
It's not plumbing, it, I think it's something we can do, we can have maintenance do here, you know, Jason might do.
It depends on if we have an existing threaded piece, if not, then we've got to work on, who's going to do soldering?
The threaded, no, the threaded piece, we have all the bleeders, and, you know, some of the screwdriver type, you put a, turn on the screwdriver, other ones have that skate key type, it's a hex head, I mean, a square head. You open it up, if, some of these, I had air come out for a full minute. It, air's getting in the system somewhere, we shouldn't be getting...
Do we have an air separator? Ask the question, do we have an air separator in our water system? A lot of times, especially all this...
And that could be...
...gas expansion tank, but you don't have the air separator.
It could be, that could be exactly what it is, and that's an automatic bleeder.
It may not catch something that's already trapped at the top, but it should catch enough cycling so that you're not constantly having to go to the top to bleed out air.
You picture, picture a little cylinder, just a little pipe, it's got a float in it. So when the pipe's full of water, the float's up top, that float is a needle that closes a hole. So when an air gap comes in, the float doesn't float, it drops. Then the air rushes out, and the water pushes up and closes it back on. It's just a simple float and a pin is all it is, um, nothing an automatic bleeder does anywhere. And, you know, as long as it's got fluid in it, the float stays up and stays closed. And once an air bubble comes in, it drops down, the water burps out, it shuts it right back up again, it's very simplistic. Everything about these systems in general, it's like a pot of water in the stove. The, the big scary furnace burner thing with all the electronics incorporated hookups is just heating that pot of water. And the pumps pull it through the building.
Also...
Thermostats determine which one gets it.
Reach out to our oil provider, mass save, as the two can help you understand what potential, uh, incentives are out there to help replace an old oil burner, or an oil boiler. It's never going to come close to paying for the whole thing, but it'll give you a better idea of where to fit in.
Because we already have a second burner down there that's disconnected, and I don't know why.
I'm with you, I got a feeling what happened is, we had two, they both worked one die, they let it stay dead, and then they grabbed the next one, and now we're running it to death. And it's about time we're going to have to...
You could ask Dennis Fleming about it, he has his, his burner license and certification, and maybe he could give some insight into it for you. But, yeah, there is a complete second unit down there, it's plumbed, it's not disconnected, it's plumbed and attached, just disconnected from power.
Yeah.
So it, it may be as simple as a new burner, and that's up and running. In which case, you know, then we make sure we have, whether you're burning one all the time or burning two, it puts less wear and tear on it. And if one goes down, you have the backup, um, you know, two in theory obviously are working a lot less because they put out, BTUs, British Thermal Units. They put so much energy out each one. So if you have two running, they'll run less often, and then you bust out, but it's going to be a quicker heating with two sources of heat. It brings it up to temp quicker. So I would be interested in asking RJ's, see if Dennis, what Dennis knows about it, and ask RJ's why it's out of service, and what would it take to put that one back in service.
Okay.
Unless it's out for a reason that we don't know, I'd like to find out why. That ship has sailed long before we were here.
Okay.
Agreed.
So you have heat coming right now, you're still getting frustrated with the...
Yeah, I think this is one of the few days where we've had heat when we founded it. So, um, we did have Travis from IM Power here today, and what he did was, um, he installed an antenna extension, um, to help improve communications between the wireless stat controllers, uh, throughout the building, and he said that that, um, should improve the system reliability, so we do see some improvement there. But I guess I'm just worried more about long-term, like what, uh, expensive issues are we going to run into?
Everything I've heard about the heat so far that comes up, other than, like I said, that screw in a damper that was blocking it last year from closing an actuator, it seems to be in the IT side.
Okay.
And if, when I was putting in security panels back in the day, you really didn't like if you locking it, your panel into a brick vault, which that pretty much is. They might want to consider some sort of plug-in antenna extender and move an antenna remote out, drill a hole through the wall and get an antenna out of that enclosed room.
I think that's what he did, was we built it outside, because that's what he recognized, is that it's within like a bomb shelter, basically, and, um, we needed something that was external that would be able to communicate that.
And the next thing we'll be addressing is going to be heat in that room because it's too hot in that room.
Okay.
The true?
The electronics room, at the top of the stairs when you go down, you get in the...
The, uh, whole IT room thing that used to be Adam's office.
It's too dang hot in that room, for electronics need to be cooled down, um, and stay cool. We're asking for trouble if we don't cool that room down, so. Be that a, a unit on a wall-mounted unit like this in the room, or a ventilation fan, uh, we're going to have to look into addressing that soon, too.
In long-term, uh, if we actually had the money, come up with grant money, a combination of things, because it might actually fit into a Green Communities grant, is upgrading an oil-fired boiler to what they call now as an electric heat pump boiler, you can still create your hot water. It runs kind of like that in a concept, like a reverse, that's just AC, but I think, they make the splits, for those that don't know, what they call them, heat pumps. So it's AC in the summer, it's heating in the winter. It can run up to... I think they're making them now, they can run up to eight degrees Fahrenheit outside, and still be able to provide heat inside. And, um, one, it's cleaner, it's not oil, it's just electricity. Yes, your electricity price goes up, or your oil goes down. Generally, over time, your maintenance also goes down, you're not cleaning nozzles the same way, you know, with the boiler. It may be something we start looking at, especially if Green Communities will pump a significant amount of money into it.
Right. That's what Travis from, he also mentioned that the other day, was that, uh, potentially reaching out to Green Communities for the silverware.
I think they've limited it to two-hundred thousand a community, or two-hundred and five versus the old two-hundred and fifty, so it's, however the state's funding that budget, I think they're pinching.
And before we move on, do you have any updates for us on the Fire Station Committee or on the Cable Access we've been into that?
So the Fire Station, we are going to be meeting soon. We, I wanted to schedule a meeting for this Wednesday, but I don't think that I'm going to have enough people for that, so I, um, going to delay that probably until next week. And the Cable Access, um, so there was the, the Community Compact IT Grant that was due last week, and I was looking into potentially having, um, some of the charter, um, lines funded through that, but I think that was just, that just wasn't going to work out. One, the time constraint with me in MCPPO training last week, and also just with everything going on, um, I just didn't have enough time to reach out to Spectrum and just, um, trying to get all the pieces together, so I ended up using the Community Compact Grants for something that has been applied for many, by many other communities, and is a pretty consistently successful grant application, which is for, um, getting documents, um, digitalized.
Scanned it.
Um, so, and that's something that Ellen and I have been talking about for a little while. So right now, um, Cable, I haven't done, um, anything as much as I had, as much as I'd like to, uh, recently, but the Fire Station Committee, we are, um, going to meet probably in the, if not next week, the week after.
Okay. And you'd originally talked with Gobi or Merthium or both when you were...
Merthium seemed to be the, uh, one that seemed to be more willing to keep pushing for...
And your follow-up?
...assist us with the, the internet access through Cable.
So you haven't had any follow-ups or anything, I'll give them a call, too, I can give them a call and see what's...
One thing I would say, from my experience, is Spectrum Charter will move as slow as you let them.
Yes.
So, going to be a lot of knocking on the door, calling the number, so just keep it in mind. I, I know you're giving what you can give, so don't, I'm not trying to say...
Do more.
Right.
But don't let it slip, because after two weeks, they just hope you never call again.
Right. I was in a meeting last Friday, um, with other female leaders across the state, and we were talking, we were all talking about our frustrations with broadband, um, accessibility. That was the main topic of the, the discussion, was how, um, you know, specifically rural communities don't have access to broadband. So we are hoping to see some movement on the state level to maybe seize, I guess, my hope is that at one point we're going to see that this is mandated, that everybody has to have access to broadband, kind of like everybody, you know, has access to electricity almost, um...
Well, they tie it with the mandates for, for education, No Child Left Behind, and this, you know, it should go hand in hand with that today.
Right, so I do want to do some more research before, I, you know, what I'm afraid of hap- happening is, as much as I want our residents to have broadband tomorrow, we spend a million and a half on broadband, and then the next day, the state is like, okay, we're rolling out this initiative where we're funding broadband for all rural communities, or federal government, or, or what happens, so...
By the same means, we can't wait till they do, because they haven't yet, and we've been after this for years, and, and if we have to start spending some of that money to, to get the ball rolling, we're going to have to, but we've got to, we've got to hatch it out something to get this ball rolling.
And I'll, and I'll tell you something that...
And everybody listening, please call your state rep and state senator as well.
Definitely.
More phone calls, the better.
There's a few things that I, I've heard, a lot of times, people keep talking about, you know, wait for the next satellite system, or wait for the next, uh, 5G, Wi-Fi, whatever, and... I'm personally kind of against, at least especially the 5G, because there has been enough studies to say that it's not necessarily healthy.
Yeah.
And so you, it's the quickest way the state's going to say, here's a way to answer it, is, here's 5G, and we're going to throw it into our forests and our undeveloped rural neighborhoods, and never think twice, and then start to realize, we've not just affected the humans, we've infected the ecology of the environment, because maybe it's making birds not want to live here anymore. I'm not saying it's killing them, but it may make it so they don't want to live here, I think. There's not enough in it, and by the time it is ready or safe, we're still going to be the last one to get it. And, uh, a lot of people talk about the, uh, what do they call it, Small Cell, and something Verizon was pushing.
Yep.
You can't do that unless you got fiber optic running on your poles anyway.
Right.
Because they're going to tap into your fiber optic to then distribute to the rest of the neighborhood.
Yep.
Satellites, I don't care if there are high satellites or low satellites, you still have the entire atmosphere between you and the satellite, it's not going to change that. And if it does, you may want to question the strength of that signal and what it's doing to you. I'm just saying, there's...
We've all got...
Hardwire is always the safest, most reliable internet. So the broadband or even fiber optic, at some point, I would love to see the town start trying to, and, and initiative, even with national grid, to get some of our major power lines buried. Especially in our areas where we're constantly getting the tree knocked down.
You know, I think everyone has a microwave nowadays, and unless I have this wrong, which I don't think I do, they originally were called radar ranges, when they first came out with these. And that was from an accidental exposure when people were doing radar testing with the new radar, and they, it, it cooked stuff that was left out in front of it. And they realized the potential that it excites molecules, and they use that technology down in, in, into a safe, everyday-use ovens. But initially, I mean, if you were out there exposed to those initial radar tests when they were doing, um, these high-power radars, you were cooking things from the inside, and we just don't know how much of that 5G could be doing to the inside of your head, or, or what it's doing to excite molecules in the body, or what else they are, but there's certainly enough that we saw months ago when we put the moratorium on it. Many, many medical people in all the countries are signing up and have concerns for it, so we just want, we've already held off, in this town anyways, with the installation of that, until we learn more about it, but...
So, I'm just saying, I guess, with all of that, you're going to hear all of these options, this is the way to go, this is the way to go, and personally, I'm still sitting back like, let's be careful we don't get sold something that is, that's the cheapest fix for the rural community,
Right.
when it may not be the thing we're looking for.
It may not even be a decent fix.
Right.
It's just cheapest.
So, look, you got a signal, you know, I used to have four-bar signaling with Verizon at my house, I can barely get two now, why? Because they don't care about me as a customer. They change the cell tower to another location, I'm on the wrong side of the hill, whatever. What's to say the 5G won't be the very next thing? I don't need to.
All right. Anything else? Look for the appropriate motion.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
I have a motion, and a motion and a second to adjourn. Any further discussion, hearing none, a call for a vote, all those in favor?
Matter of an yes.
No, hard, yes.
And Delo Sullivan is yes.
Have a good evening, Dylan, good to see you.